Call to order, City Commission meeting of Monday, September 18th, 2017. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item, the order of business. Mr. Kessel, are there any changes to the order of business?
No changes this evening, President Decker.
Okay, there are no changes to the order of business. Look for a motion to approve the order of business.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. The consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that the commissioners would like to discuss?
Mr. President, I would like to move the meeting minutes for September 5th to the next meeting, please. I will work with Rita on some changes to the meeting minutes.
Okay. Are any commissioners opposed to tabling the meeting minutes dated September 5th, 2017, to the next meeting?
No.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second on moving the meeting minutes. We'll go ahead and vote on moving the meeting minutes. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Steiner.
I almost called you Schneider. Mr. Steiner. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich.
Aye.
Chair votes aye to move the meeting minutes to September, of the September 5th, 2017. The rest of the consent agenda, is there anything that commissioners would like to discuss or table?
Mr. President, I just had a question on item C. And maybe this should go to Sean. Do we get to see everybody that applies for these positions?
Yes, we do. Actually, the ordinance does say that you should get a list of all the applications. The one that's listed is the list.
Because I know of one that applied and was never brought forward because I asked them to apply.
Oh, not sure I'm aware of that one. So if there's a second one, we have two openings.
So, I was just curious if, how that all worked, but I thought by ordinance we were supposed to see anybody that applied, so.
Yep, you are. That's, that, you're supposed to get a list and then a recommendation.
Maybe check with Rita on that.
Okay.
So do, Mr. Friedrich, do you wish to table?
No, I don't have any issue with approving Mr. Kurski.
Okay.
Just curious on the process, so.
All right. Any other questions on the civil service commissioner? I'm glad to hear that we have another application because we do have another opening, so.
We do.
Okay, if there's nothing else on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss or change or table, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved as amended. We have a lot of timetable stuff this evening, starting at 5:00. We'll move on to admin. And the first thing up is a restaurant on sale liquor license amendment for Blue 42. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Decker. We have an application to change a liquor license. The license holder, which is Blue 42 and Mr. Mike Lafore, did not apply for Sunday openings when he applied for his liquor license originally. He'd like to change and add Sunday openings. He has done so by special use permit, so for the last two, kind of as a test, and I think things must have gone well because he's now asked to add Sunday openings. The nice thing about Sunday openings from our standpoint as a city is it does also trigger then the need to charge the 1 percent booze tax, which they didn't have to prior. So this should change our tax collections in that area as well. We have reviewed the application. He has paid his fees and it is our recommendation to approve the change in the license.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kessel on this license amendment?
I'd make a recommendation to approve.
Second.
We have a recommendation to approve the amendment for Blue 42 and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is approved to the Blue 42 license. Next up, we have a resolution.
President Decker, this resolution is a carefully crafted proclamation, really, so I assume that you'd like to read that resolution as if it was a proclamation.
I will read it. We have a resolution number on this?
It would be 11-2017.
11-2017, okay. Resolution number 11-2017, a resolution proclaiming October 4th, 2017 as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, whereas the City of Dickinson has a strong history as a community supporting manufacturing in the approximately 1,400 stable sustained jobs that manufacturers provide. And whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of innovation in our economy and manufacturing firms fund most domestic corporate research and development. And the resulting innovation in productivity growth improve our standards of living. And whereas many opportunities exist for Dickinson area residents to utilize their skills and talents in manufacturing in order to improve their lives and those of their loved ones. And whereas manufacturing diversifies the local economy thereby bringing sustainability to the community. And whereas manufacturing is a significant creator of new wealth by means of sales outside of our area and outside of our state. And whereas over 1,000 North Dakota companies provide excellent careers in manufacturing for over 35,000 people and are adding new jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the Board of City Commissioners of the City of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 4th, 2017 as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson and encourage all citizens to consider the positive impact of modern manufacturing on their lives and its contribution to the success of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota, and the United States of America dated this 18th day of September, 2017. And I would look for a motion to approve this resolution or deny the resolution.
So moved.
A motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 11-2017 is approved. And I don't have a copy to sign, so.
We'll get that done after. I do have one announcement, President Decker. If you'd like me to wait until the end, I can certainly do that.
Uh, no, we can go ahead and make the announcement.
I just wanted to update the commission. Since the commission has provided some funding for the Downtown Dickinson Association, that funding was twofold. First was to hire a staff person and the second was to update the downtown plan and make some public presentations regarding that plan. The Dickinson Downtown Association has extended an offer and it's been accepted for their director. Their title is actually Executive Director and Lindsay Schaefer has accepted that position. She'll begin her position on September 20th and so they are excited. I have the press release I'll share. So I'm additionally excited to have someone to work with on a regular basis to further your goals as a city commission regarding the downtown and this is a step forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. We'll move on to engineering. Public safety has nothing to report this evening. Mr. Kubis, you have a CPM agreement for the Dickinson Eighth Street project?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. The Eighth Street project, which we'll have some further discussion on, on a timetable agenda regarding the truck route, is the upcoming year's DOT project. So this is their standard cost participation and maintenance agreement. What they're looking for for the city is an $800,000 match of, towards the project that would come from sales tax. That's all standard, again, the sales tax dollars is what we've historically used to match the projects that we have local, or DOT dollars on. So there's some water main improvements on this that the DOT doesn't participate in those costs. And we would recommend using oil impact dollars for those water main improvements. We did want to take care of the water main improvements as we are reconstructing the street with this project, so there's about $350,000 that we would like budget from the GPT or the oil impact dollars as well. With that, I would open it up for any questions that you might have regarding the CPM agreement with the DOT.
Any questions for Engineer Kubis on this project?
Mr. Kubis, we'll be discussing the truck route later on tonight, apparently. And this is part of that truck route that we're discussing. And I see that this is 0.648 miles, so it's not quite a full mile. And we're going to be putting over $4 million into that six tenths of a mile, correct?
The project is estimated at just over $2 million. We have a project cap of $4 million. We have to cap these projects very early on in the DOT process, so we're capped well above what our project, what the actual project is going to cost, so.
On page 1 of 9, it states federal funds obligated to this project shall not exceed 80.93 percent of the total eligible project cost up to a maximum of $4,240,000.
Correct. Okay. That cap, Commissioner Steiner, actually came from years previous when in 2018, at one point in time, we had the East Velard project was going to be the city's priority project for 2018.
So the 4 million is not available at this time? What I'm getting at, if the city would contribute more of our funds to upgrade that road to where, you know, because right now, the way it's going to be with the 2 million, it's going to be tough to allow truck route over that because it's just going to beat up the street again. But if we could give more of the city money and get more of the federal money to upgrade the pavement to something that would handle a truck route, is that?
Right, so the current estimate for construction is just at $2 million, $2.06 million. The DOT will still participate at 80.97 percent of the eligible costs, so that would exclude water main. We want to replace the water main, which is estimated at $350,000 using GPT. The remaining 1 point, I want to say this right here, but the remaining $812,000 would be our match, our 20 percent on that. And that's what we would take from the sales tax dollars.
And I may be wrong, but I remember in discussions we had talked about adding another $40,000 to beef the road up a little. Am I correct?
Right.
To do what?
To.
To make the road thicker, to handle truck traffic.
And as long as that's the truck route, the DOT would support that at 80 percent. And I think I'm giving you some wrong figures here. I need to re-figure, but we have about... So of the 1.3 million dollars, we would only be obligated to spend 20 percent of that. There may be more costs and we've estimated that at $200,000. There will be more costs to make this road able to handle trucks, but the DOT would still participate in 80 percent of that cost.
So as it's currently proposed, will that be sufficient for truck traffic, truck route traffic? Let me ask that way. Once we get it done. Because the part coming down, we're saying is really not sufficient for truck route traffic. But if this is put in and it meets truck route traffic, then we have something to look forward in the future to complete that truck route that is fit for truck traffic.
That total project cost that I'd mentioned, 2 million, 2.06 million, would be a section that doesn't handle truck route traffic. And that was based on?
Does not handle.
Does not handle it. There'd be $200,000 more, this is an estimate again, so 2.2 million dollars to handle truck route traffic. Of that, there's still $350,000 of water main that we'd like to replace.
There's still ours.
Regardless of what section of pavement goes in. So, but of that $200,000, since our cap is above that amount, we would still receive 80 percent of it. And the city share, I'm sorry, is not, is not 800,000. It's 20 percent of 1.2...
200 and some thousand.
Of about a million dollars, so it's about 200 and some thousand dollars, yeah.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
And we had discussed in a prior meeting, beefing up that road to handle any trucks, be it local traffic or some ag traffic.
Right, it doesn't change any costs, it's other than the pavement section itself, which without trucks would be four inches of pavement on eight inches of base, with trucks, five inches of pavement on 10 inches of base. So it's not a huge difference, just because we have really good subsoils there. The subgrade can support a lot of weight, so the pavement doesn't need to be beefed up so much.
Any other questions for Engineer Kubis on this agreement? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve or deny this agreement with the DOT.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the CPM agreement.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The agreement is approved. Next up, we have a traffic study. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, yes. On the map that we have on the overhead is a depiction of some of the major intersections in Western Dickinson, so the last time we made a traffic count or a traffic study was just after our comprehensive plan. In 2014, we did traffic counts and we've made a lot of major improvements and some minor improvements to our streets and our intersections in West Dickinson. Obviously, we built the state avenues, 21st Street, 30th Avenue, the interim bypass, and then have added signals at three of those intersections as well. With the addition of the new school, though, we'd like to go and count our traffic again, see what our traffic flows have become now with the new school, hospital, commercial development out west. So we asked for proposals from some of our local firms that have done transportation work in Dickinson lately. And as an executive team, we met last week and have selected KLJ. We would like to begin negotiations of a contract with them as soon as possible so we can beat winter weather and while the school's still, schools in session, but beat the winter weather, get accurate counts of that traffic. Our recommendation would be that the study will be funded by oil impact funds with short-term recommendations. I'm thinking stop signals, maybe a left turn arrow on a signal or flashing stop signs that we could implement this year. We would fund those with our 50 percent of the 1 percent sales tax dollars. And long-term implementations, if it was adding another lane to a street or a whole new intersection to be signalized, would be something we would prioritize in future CIT years, so. With that, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
No, I think it's a good idea. The traffic has changed a lot over there, so.
I would agree. I know, you know, people are very excited about the new traffic signals, but I've heard concerns with inability to turn left in a lot of those areas, so I think this is certainly something we need to look at.
I would say we've been fairly, I would say, very consistent with the recommendations that came out of the comp plan. But some of the things that have happened certainly weren't in the comp plan. We probably planned on a new middle school, didn't know the exact location back in 2013. So it's good to have the numbers to back up and either validate what we've done so far or make some changes moving forward.
Mr. Kubis, what is the cost of this study?
We did not ask for a cost. We anticipate $50,000 approximately for the traffic study itself. And then implementation of minor recommendations, we would have to fit within our existing budget for the street improvements for this year. Beyond that, major improvements would have to be budgeted through future budgeting processes.
And when the project's, at what amount do we have to put it for bids? Over 100?
Over 100.
I guess I'm just concerned at the cost, at 50,000, so.
I wouldn't mind seeing the numbers that make up that 50,000. I have the same concern and I've expressed it in the last year or so that.
Certainly.
We have the time now to look these bids over a lot better. I think there's more people that can bid on them and so on. And, you know, we got to do more than a rubber stamp at this time again.
Absolutely. I would certainly invite any of you, if you'd want to be on, you know, in this negotiation process. We don't have anything formal set up. We made a selection based on the proposals that were received. I think the committee thought, we received two proposals and I think the committee agreed. Both proposals were very well done. The proposal from KLJ was done completely internal where the other proposal used some outside sources to do the bulk of the work. And we hadn't worked with that firm before, so.
Okay.
But certainly, we could set up meetings and send out invites to be involved in those negotiations and really have it broke down, show what we're getting for that $50,000. That's just an estimate from me. I know we don't have an unlimited amount by any means to do studies like these, but they are important.
Okay.
And this certainly doesn't lock us in to any dollar amount, so.
Okay. So, any other questions on this traffic study or... I'm comfortable if you got a couple of bids and I guess I would just like to see the breakdown of the costs.
Absolutely.
I guess I would look for if someone wants to... I guess you have a timetable that you're looking at conducting this?
Well, we'd like to have the agreement with the dollar amount in front of you at the next meeting, so it gives us maybe roughly a month. Hopefully that we won't have to think about snow across our fingers.
I guess then if commission's comfortable with the proposal, I would look for, I guess, a motion to either approve or deny.
I would make motion to approve the proposal, again, keeping in mind that we want to work on the best budget for it, too. It's an important study, but we want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck on that.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion to approve the proposal.
I'd second that motion.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The agreement is approved.
Thank you. The next item is a report. There's been some comments, obviously, people have driven on Westridge Drive out in the Menards area. And there's been some continued, what I'd consider premature failure of those concrete streets in that subdivision. City staff have recreated a timeline that was included in your packets that goes through the initial construction, the plat approval, subsequent corrections that were made by the developer and their contractors, and recent city work that was completed by our staff or consultant that we hired. Also go through some recommended improvements moving forward and some funding options, but just wanted to share with you and quickly, the timeline's fairly long. I won't go through every, every point on the timeline, but in general, you know, this project was started in 2012 by Roers. They came through, did soil tests out there, 15, what we call proctor tests, and they take those back into the lab and see what the maximum, you know, theoretical density they can get. And then they have to go out and recreate that in the field. We all saw if we were here in 2012, a lot of dirt got moved, so sometimes those proctor tests can get a little diluted as you take a test here, move a bunch of dirt a quarter mile away. But they did go through the, I think, what we would consider the industry standard for testing their soils out there. The plat then was approved in 12. As they started construction in late 12 and through the whole year of 13, there was actually 373 total density tests that were taken. Not all of them passed. Some of them did fail, they would retest, recompact and retest those areas. And then the concrete pavement, there was also concrete testing done. This was before the city had adopted our city spec, but their engineer had a specification in these plans, whether it was exactly like our city spec. It was what I considered a fairly legitimate spec for municipal work. So in 2013, on Halloween, actually, we did the final inspection of the project. We had noticed that valves were settling. We agreed that now wasn't the time to dig into it, so we told them it would be a punch list item. There's a lot of construction underway in the winter of 13, 14, so those streets were opened up with the understanding that they would make corrections to some settling. It was mainly water valves at the time. So they did that in 2014. In the spring and summer, they have removed approximately 16 collars around those valves and readjusted and replaced them. In 2015, we sent a letter to Roers saying that more valves were settling, the fixes they had made were unsatisfactory. They came back in 15 and readjusted another 20 collars. Later in that year, in 2015, what people said were raising manholes were starting, started to show up. Well, the manholes weren't raising up, they were sitting on a pretty firm foundation, 15, 20 feet below the ground. The rest of the road had begun to settle. And so in 20... I want to get my dates right here. In 2016, in 2015, I believe we fixed one of those areas where a manhole was protruding from the road in 2016. Another one was noticed, so at that time, we hired Braun Intertek to take a look at this road and do what they call GPR survey and its ground penetrating radar. And they can take a look and see the different densities of the, you know, if there's pavement and base and sand underneath it. They can see that with their radar. And they did find, what we found visually when we replaced one of those manholes was that there were voids underneath the concrete pavement, that the subgrade had settled enough, the concrete in general is holding in place, but that there were voids from the settlement. So last year, I believe it was Director Zurov had presented some of those recommendations and options that came from the Braun Intertek study of their GPR of these roadways. So just to be clear, we're only discussing the concrete streets. There were asphalt streets that were paved as part of a subsequent project in, it's still in the same area, but that was in Westridge, in a replat of Westridge first. So we're talking over 7,000, 7,200 feet of roadway, of concrete roadway. Should have put it on the map here right away, but the map, you can see the area highlighted in light or light blue is the concrete streets that we were looking at. It's Westridge Drive, Rough Rider, and Legend. And then the red outline is, is the properties really that have their primary access off one of those concrete streets. So the purpose of this really is to see, you know, if we need to replace or repair streets that have settled. Right now, we've been handling it as kind of an, as needed. If it's a safety concern, we've been addressing these areas. And then there's a few alternatives. We could still continue to do nothing. Obviously, that doesn't fix the problem, so there would be some discontinued reactive maintenance that we'd have to, have to do on the concrete streets. And based on some of the dollars that we've spent in the past couple of years, we're estimating that to be anywhere from 100 to $250,000 or more per year. As a kind of a follow-up to the Braun study, slab jacking was one of their preferred recommendations. Couple of different ways of doing it, the mud jacking, that we're all familiar with that terminology. They can do lightweight mud jacking or, in this case, they had recommended a foam jacking where they inject foam to lift the concrete pavement. That cost estimate was 1.8 million dollars. Again, there was still some concern about, has the soil continued or will it continue to settle? Again, there was still some concern about, has the soil continued, or will it continue to settle? Braun's thought was that, yes, in certain areas, it could continue to settle. So they gave us a cost estimate, what it would cost to inject foam down into the soil to stabilize the soil all the way down to the utilities. And that was four and a half million dollars. These alternatives, reconstruction alternatives, would assume that, again, nothing's going to settle anymore. Our pipes are okay how they are. If we would reconstruct to existing, the concrete streets with the raised median, based on our last concrete reconstruction project, we'd be looking at about four million dollars, or reconstructing to asphalt at about three and a quarter million dollars. These are very rough estimates. Just want to, you know, throw some ballpark numbers out there to get people thinking the magnitude of what we're talking about. Potential funding options, no matter which route we would go, we could use our sales tax that we use for our annual street projects, the same sales tax that we just talked about dedicating to our local match on the Eighth Street project. We probably don't have that kind of money to do one project, so we'd have to divide this into segments. And then, of course, maintenance on other streets would be deferred to address the maintenance on Westridge.
Mr. Kubis?
Yes.
If we could, we have, we'll hold right there. It's five o'clock.
Okay.
We'll come back. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions asked about this.
Okay.
But we do have a public hearing at five o'clock for single stream recycling. Mr. Kessel, or Director Zurov, whoever wants to handle this?
Public Works Director Zurov has a brief presentation that they prepared for tonight. You know, what we're really trying to find out is what is the direction of the city commission? And our hopes are to take input tonight from the public and from the commission and move forward in whatever direction you choose.
Thank you, Administrator Kessel. President Decker, we don't have a presentation. It just will have some discussion. I did want to let everybody know we do have the contractor that was picked with the second request for proposal. Ref Ralph Freeball is here. If we have any questions, he can sure answer as far as the RFP, as far as the contractor, any contract questions, he'd be glad to answer. I don't know how far back we want to go, but I guess we're to the point now where we're working on the contract with Renaissance Recycling, who did, was picked as the second, as the person with the best request for proposal. The edits we're working at with the contract are making it a ten-year, as requested in his proposal. We're looking at some performance standards. Also, the discussion about, it is every other week pickup, and what he's looking at is odds one week evens the next, as far as addresses go. His contract cost was six dollars and five cents, which he would charge the city for. But there's also been a lot of discussion on homestead credit. Do we allow lower cost for certain individuals? If we allow that, plus administratively, we'd be looking at a higher cost, of course, per resident. Because if we eliminate a cost for some, the money's going to have to come from somewhere. The increased cost to other residents. So that's the base cost for the contract, not necessarily the base cost for the residents if recycling is implemented. Some of the operational changes, we've talked about numerous times with implementation of recycling, is replacing the residential, or the big alley containers with residential carts. For operational purposes, that makes a big difference. It's a lot easier. We did have some discussions with a couple of residents about retaining walls in some areas, and some difficulties with that. So we'd have to look at a block to block. If it's not feasible, we'd still probably have to keep some of the bigger containers in the alleys. There's discussion about elimination of the rear load garbage route. You know, if we can eliminate that, we're going to have some additional pickups if we go with the single carts and keep costs down without having additional staff needed. Increased hours at the baler is what we're looking at, too. If we can eliminate the rear route, we can have additional hours at the baler, and which would hopefully help with recycling and grass leaves and things like that. I guess, any other questions that I can answer before you open it up for a public hearing? I'd be glad. We present a lot of information. I thought I'd print and put something in a packet, but there's so much information, so much past discussions, that I thought we'd just open it up for discussion.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov?
What is your target date for implementing?
Well, originally, you know, I think originally, we looked at possibly the fall, but the contract isn't done yet. I guess I would think, right now, we'd be looking at spring implementation.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Zurov? I guess I just have one question. At one time, we had expressed as a commission to have a five-year contract with options. That's not what the vendor prefers?
That's correct. In the RFP, it was five-year, or on our, when we submitted the RFP out, it was five-year with possible additions to that. He submitted ten-year. So he wants the ten-year contract.
I guess then, my question would be, what are the performance standards that he needs to meet?
Well, we just met this afternoon and discussed that. I think that's something we'll have to work out. Of course, one of them is the basic contract of that he is there when he's supposed to be there, every other week at that address, picking up the recycling. I remember some of the other performance standards we talked about. There's educational material that is part of it. How do we deal with, you know, closing accounts, opening accounts, working with the contractor? How responsive is the contractor to complaints? If he misses that, can, does he, can he respond within 24 hours? I think that was some of the discussion you guys had, that he's getting able to get there within 24 hours if he does miss a can. So, we don't have those set right now.
The reduction?
Also, the reduction, in other words, how good a job we're doing in reducing the landfill and how much recycling material we're actually collecting. To me, I think that's a good performance standard. How much of the waste are we diverting to recycle? All those aren't set yet, so we're working on those now to bring forward a contract. But that was, I know, some of our discussion. If it is a longer term, we need some good performance standards.
I would agree. Any other questions for Mr. Zurov? Well, there's no more questions for Mrs. Zurov. What I'll do is open up the public hearing for the single stream recycling proposal. Do you have a question or comment? Please state your name. And once you've come to the podium, and let us know your concern or question.
Yeah, last time, I was pretty nervous, so this time, I came prepared.
Could you please state your name?
My name's Al Thorstedt. And I'm speaking in front of the fathers of this community, especially Mr. Steiner, sat around for a while. I'm totally against the recycling project. I think it's a bad idea. And first of all, we must remember, this is Dickinson, we're not Bismarck. I know in Bismarck, they got a mandatory recycling project that everybody has to commit to it. I noticed that might not postpone their upcoming recycling project because they weren't sure it was a good idea. I guess there needed a little more investigation. I think it's a bad idea for five reasons. Number one, it doesn't make any money for the city of Dickinson. And it's costing the residents more money. And we, as residents, if you took a vote in this community, I don't think you'd have a positive vote. I think most people are against this. Not only that, it will destroy city streets and roads. Plus, it costs every resident, every business, especially in the future, seventy, at least seventy-two dollars a year, if not more. And that's just for starts. I'm sure when they come into problems, it's going to be more. It could be a burden for the residents of Dickinson because the containers are going to be in the front streets. Now, we have to consider the streets are going to take a lot of damage, especially during the winter, in any storms. We also have to realize there's going to be a lot more traffic congestion, more street parking problems, more traffic holdups, just total confusion. I suggested, and Mr. Proust brought this up about, I guess, last, on the Fourth of September, he said that in the future, they're going to need a landfill. So why not just build another landfill? Like, now's the time, common sense, to make another landfill. In fact, I was on the phone today, not that anybody cares. I spoke to a realtor, there's some property about four miles between here and Glassstone, for two hundred ninety-nine thousand, eleven acres of land. It's got a huge barn, a workshop, a house, now eleven acres of land. That's maybe like five and a half city, five and a half city blocks. That would make a nice landfill, wouldn't it? And it busts right up next to the Hart River. It's got water, it's got electric, it's got sewer, it's got everything. I think it's a better idea to build a new landfill because down the road, we're going to need anyway. So why waste money now? It doesn't make money for the city to recycle. Somebody else is making money off the backs of the residents of Dickinson. So it makes common sense to buy land now and start a new landfill. They have a barn, they have a house, they have a shop, everything's there. It's only two hundred ninety-nine thousand. The lady I heard is kind of desperate to sell it, she probably is up for less. More importantly, it's not, most people don't think that recycling is important. You haven't asked people behind me, it's like, why are we recycling? Most of our recyclers in town, they need to get out their rear ends, I'm sorry for my language, but they need to advertise about their pickups, their metal pickups, their plastic, their paper, whatever. Customers would love to make money recycling themselves instead of paying six or more dollars per month when they're not in worth, it's just a problem. And concluding, it just doesn't make sense. Our wisdom, you people right here, the city commission, you know, we're supposed to show wisdom, and sometimes our wisdom is foolishness to God. And I know we are a God-fearing community, and we always will be. Dickinson is a great city. It's one of the reasons why we were voted North Coast City for a reason. We're not greedy. Now's the time to smart up and please the residents of this town, vote this recycling down. You know, we need to swallow our pride. It's not about money. Quit stumbling on the rubble. I think we need to trash the recycling idea before it buries us in millions of dollars and millions of headaches, possibly lawsuits. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm sure you don't.
Any questions for Mr. Thorstedt?
I think it's a waste of time.
Thank you, Mr. Thorstedt.
Thank you.
Just to update you, Mr. Thorson, the city has been in negotiation for land purchase for years now, so, you know, that is on the table for discussion, and, you know, we have been addressing it.
Anyone else want to come forward from the public? Please come forward, state your name.
Hello, I'm Sarah Kramer, and I am in full support of the recycling program for Dickinson. As a member of this community, I believe it's our duty to preserve Dickinson's land. We need to look at more sustainable practices for waste management. Burying our trash just isn't economical or ethically right. How much land do we waste for our landfills? Plastic will not degrade for a thousand-plus years. That means that we are giving up space for an archaic practice that will deprive future generations of use of that land. I lived in many different places, and Dickinson is the first place that doesn't have a recycling program in place. Recycling isn't just a fad for younger generations such as myself. We demand ecological consciousness. I go out of town to do my recycling, and I know I'm not alone. That means that Fargo and Bismarck are getting money that I spend out on the weekends. With the recycling program in place, Dickinson can keep jobs and businesses here and let the rest of the state know that we are moving forward. And I want that for my city and for my future. I recycle, and I also, really nervous, I also do compost. And I can tell you, I take out my trash maybe twice a month now, and that's going to lessen the amount of pickups that we have for that trash. I mean, it'll equal itself out. It's not like we're going to become overrun with recycling. I think they go, I mean, we have a perfect balance, and, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Any questions for Ms. Kramer? Thank you.
President Decker, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to mention that Ms. Kramer also implemented a recycling program here at City Hall, and actually, kind of throughout the city, so she's done a, throughout city buildings, excuse me. She's done a nice job with that. And to Mr. Thorson's comments, I made the commission aware of this earlier today, but I don't know if everybody in the audience is aware that Money Magazine named Dickinson the sixth-best place to live in the United States. And it's quite a feather in our cap. And this discussion and Mr. Thorson's comments made me think of that and remind, I wanted to remind the commission of that, this commission meeting, so...
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Anyone else wish to come forward with their concerns about recycling?
Hello, my name is Suzanne Russ. So when I moved here in 2008 from Green Day, Wisconsin, and no Packer comments, or I don't know. We had recycled since 1988, and I came here, and like Sarah, this was the first place I ever lived where we couldn't recycle. And I think probably like Sarah, I couldn't do that. So, you know, my shed was full of bags, and I was hauling it, and I had the opportunity to work with Sean Kessel and the other committee who were working on it back in 2008, 2009, thereabouts. And I'm really pleased with the progress. I did understand, from working at that time, how hard it is here. I mean, we're really far away. You can't make a profit on it out here as easily as you can. I mean, I get all that, you know, so I'm going to commend the commission for moving forward. And I also, you know, I can respect where Mr. Thorson is coming from. You know, when you have done something a long time, it's really hard to try to change. So again, I commend the city council for moving, city commission, excuse me, for moving forward. I would just say, in support of Sarah's statement also, that once you start recycling, you realize that like ninety percent of the things you throw away is recyclable, and so you reduce what you put in the landfill. And of course, that extends the life of the landfill quite a while, once everyone starts doing that. And so, whereas it doesn't make immediate money for the city, of course, it puts off, for a long time, the expense of having to build a new landfill. I hope eventually, the city will move to not charging the people who want to do the right thing. I know that takes time, and there's a period of adjustment. My son works on a composting, he has a composting business in another city, and so he knows how long it takes for residents to come on board with things like this, and so that's understandable. I think probably people who, there are some people who don't want it. I think that an accurate viewpoint is represented there, but I think an awful lot of people are really ready for it. I couldn't speak on behalf of the city of Dickinson, or even on behalf of a majority, because I don't know. But I think that, you know, you will be pleased at the number of people who are on board and ready and have been actually waiting eagerly to have a chance to not have to drive all that dirty stuff out to Bismarck and recycle. I didn't plan my comments, I just wanted to voice my support in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ross? Again, I would state, anyone have a opinion on our single stream recycling? Please come to the podium, state your name, your concern or question, or support, or if you're against.
Hi, my name is Amanda Harden. I am fully, 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 fully one hundred percent on board with the recycling program. It's been a huge passion of mine for a long time, and I lived in a big city for about five years that did tremendous recycling. They had recycling for every single thing you can possibly think of. And that was my first introduction to it, and it was amazing. And I just noticed the amount of waste. There was less waste in general for garbage, but overall, there's just less waste because I don't know if a lot of people realize that when you recycle, it does go towards something. Plastic, for instance, it can be used to make clothing. It's recycled to make clothing, and the clothing is sustainable and it's eco-friendly. There's so many things that just plastic can go towards, instead of just throwing it away and having it in the landfill- away and having it in the landfill. And like Sarah mentioned, it doesn't just disintegrate and go anywhere, it just sits there. And I know that, I'm going on a bigger scale here, but I know that we don't live by the ocean, but there is a huge, huge area that the mostly plastic just collects, and it just stays there, and it doesn't go anywhere. And that is actually hurting the environment of the ocean and the animals that live in the ocean, therefore, our food. Because we don't just get our fish from, you know, lakes of Cackawea or rivers and lakes around North Dakota, there's stuff that comes from the ocean, and once those die off, that's essentially less food for us here. But on a smaller scale, when I, when I saw that you guys were thinking of putting a recycling program onboard, I was so excited. I remember sitting at work, I'm a downtown business owner, and I jumped up out of my chair, and I'm texting my boyfriend, my parents, and, excuse me, my husband, and, I'm a newlywed, okay?
That could be a problematic.
That's how excited I got. I just was so, I thought it was just the coolest thing that I've seen in, that we could do here. It just made me so excited, so I was spreading the word like crazy, and the majority of the people, actually, everybody that I talked to, were in full support of it as well. And I just, I know that a lot of, we've been doing things for a certain way around here, and it is hard to get used to change, but I feel that this change is such a good change, and I think that over time, everyone will see the impact that it has on our city and the world overall, because it is, it is a world problem, and I think if everybody would start going on this path, we could just decrease a lot of waste. And I just, I hope you realize that, even if a lot of people don't come up here to talk, I know for a fact that there's a lot of people onboard with this, and they either couldn't make it tonight, or they're just not the public speaking type. So I really, really hope that you take that to heart, and you push forward to have this system, because I think it is a fantastic thing that the city of Dickinson could do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Harden, or Mrs. Harden? Again, we still have a public hearing on single-stream recycling. If you have any concerns, questions, you wanna voice support, wanna voice your opinion against, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name is Nancy Kane. I've been a resident of Dickinson for four years now, also came from a place that recycled, and every, also compost, recycle, drive to Bismarck occasionally, ask friends, go into Bismarck, does anybody need me to take their recycling? So have lots of friends who also recycle, like Suzanne and Sarah. I put my trash out maybe once a month, and that's just because of the ick factor, because you just don't want your trash sitting around very long, so maybe once a month is when the trash goes out. Like I said, I've been here for four years. I'm only gonna be a resident of Dickinson for about 10 more days, so this actually won't affect me, but I really believe strongly in this. And, you know, when we, when my husband and I look for places to live, there are certain benchmarks that say, yes, we could live here, and recycling is definitely in the top three or four. It being a walkable city, which Dickinson now is working on with the trail systems, and vibrant downtown, which Dickinson is also doing a really great job, and recycling is very far up there. Mr. Kessel mentioned the Money Magazine listing Dickinson as one of the top six places. I read that this morning on Facebook as well, and I was very excited. And so people are going to be looking to move here, and companies will be looking to move here, and some, you know, sustainability is the way of the future, and the companies and the people that are going to be moving here, they'll be looking to see if Dickinson is progressive, and, you know, we can be, we can be ahead of Minut, we don't have to wait for Minut, you know? So anyway, I just wanted to, even though this is not going to affect me personally, I just hope that this will, this will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kane. Any questions for Ms. Kane?
I just wanted to mention, I didn't know you were leaving our community, but I want to thank you for being part of why we got that number six. Ms. Kane helped us on the Crooked Crane Trail. So, she was a great asset, as did Suzanne Ross.
Again, we are still in the public hearing for the single-stream recycling. If you have any concerns, questions, voice an opinion, please come forward, state your name.
Rod Lambloom. In June, I gave you a present, I made a presentation from the commission, and I handed out a three-page critique. I think you all read it before running the basket, but.
Recycling.
A couple items. What we have works. Dickinson has to be proud of the system that we have. I think that, you know, you take a look at the fact that we have, we're loading accessibility and services, we have good administration, and we have a fantastic landfill that's got a lot of life still to it. But one of the things that does bother me and concerns me is the possible discrimination, discrimination of who's gonna pay for this. Right now, the proposal is for single-family and multifamily, but what about commercial and industrial? Nobody's ever spoke to that publicly at least, and I think we have to take that into consideration. We also, I think that we can use some of our neighborhood collection systems like we have, and expand that and improve on that as an alternative. But I would be concerned about the discrimination as to who pays for it, how much you're gonna pay for it, and how sustainable is it?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lambloom?
I guess I would just add, Mr. Lambloom, we are considering commercial and apartments. They're the phase-two factor of the recycling program. It does start with a single-family, but we're working diligently to get that phase-two rolled out as soon as possible.
Yeah, but is it gonna initiate at the same time?
It would be roughly a year later. Is that correct, Ms. Zurov?
So, so local residents are gonna be paying for the project on kind of a test basis initially, and we're gonna be stuck, and then there's administrative fees, and there's escalation fees that are attached to the proposal, I understand. So I'm, again, I think this is somewhat discriminatory, and I think you should take a look at what comes into the system, into this stream, from the commercial and industrial sectors, is also very important at this point.
And they will hopefully reduce the cost to the residents. That's what we're working on, by adding commercial and apartments.
But again, we're adding 72. I remember a couple of years ago, when it only cost six bucks to pick up my garbage, then it went to nine, now we're up to 13. Now we're gonna add another six, and I'm not sure, I feel warm and fuzzy about all that.
Valid concern.
Thank you, Ms. Lambloom. Anyone else? Public hearing for single-stream recycling, please come forward, state your name, your concerns, questions, support, or if you're against.
My name is Amy Wagner, and I am most definitely for implementing a recycling program. I grew up in Dickinson, I love it here. I love watching how everything's changed and everybody's kinda grown. It's really neat. But something I've started doing over the past year is recycling, and I did have a little bit of resistance from my parents, but they've slowly grown on it, and actually, it's something that's really benefited our household. We've had significantly less garbage, and it's definitely good for the environment, because when you throw away your garbage and you don't recycle, you're just burying your problems, literally. And I don't know about you guys, but for future generations, they're gonna have to deal with that garbage, and I don't really want my kids, or my grandkids, or even my great-grandkids, to have to worry about all of that. I'd rather be progressive now and make the change now, so that they can benefit from it, as well as my generation and the current generations. So, definitely for it. Thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Wagner? Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Again, we're having the public hearing for single-stream recycling. If you have any concerns, questions, comments, please come forward, state your name for Seeing no one else from the public wants to come forward in either support or against single-stream recycling, I guess what we're down to then is, you have to work out.
Work out the contract details.
Work out the contract, and then we'll have to see, I guess, my one concern is that we did originally advertise it with a five-year with options, and now they want 10.
But it wasn't his submitted proposal for 10.
And then, but we are putting benchmarks, measurable benchmarks, that we can opt out if those aren't met.
And hopefully, we'll have ones that, you will appreciate, or ones that the commission will agree with for the next commission meeting, I guess. If you have any comments, be sure to talk to us about that.
Commissioner Decker, that's part of the process that is taking a little bit, is working with Mr. Prowse, Ms. Zurov, and myself, to find ways to, you know, we talked about smart goals, essentially, smart goals for the contract, so that they are measurable, because that's, from a legal perspective, where you run into a lot of problems, is if things are to a reasonableness standard, or they're too vague, and it's not an objective measure, so.
Well, looking forward to having a look at the contract, and then, are we looking at possibly a next commission meeting? Okay. The plan. And that, and the contract will be, once you've approved the final language, it'll be up, we can put it on our webpage, so the public can see, read through it. Okay. Any questions from commissioners, comments from two Ms. Zurov, or?
I have a couple of comments. Number one, I think recycling is a good thing. Forcing people to do what they should be doing is a concern, you know, and that's a concern I heard, is some of the cost for the elderly is on. However, I think we have a step to take care of that issue, the elderly that qualify that we can get the charge down to zero or close to zero, you know? So that takes care of that situation. I'm gonna be honest, I've received phone calls on this here, and I think it's about 50/50 whether we want it or not. So, my concern is, it looks like we're putting it off till like this spring already, it sounds like. And I know everybody has opinions, and it's after we make a decision, when they seem to come up and tell us our opinion, instead of coming like they did tonight. My question is, how many signatures does it take to put an issue on a ballot? We have an election coming up in June.
Percentage of the previous year's voting.
10%?
Yes, that's correct.
10%? So, it would be, for either side, the availability to start a petition to either approve or not approve it, and put it up for a citywide vote, if that's what you feel, you know, so, because we're talking here tonight about approving this schedule or this contract next meeting, and it looks to me like it's gonna roll through. But, so you voice your opinions tonight, and you're probably wondering, well, what do you gotta do to get anything done? That's your option, you know? So if no one takes upon themselves either put it out and approve or disapprove, normally, I think it's probably gonna be people that are gonna disapprove that would do this here, because that's probably the way it'll work on this. So, that is an option for either side. You can put it on there to approve it and see how it comes out, or if you want the other side, you can disapprove it. That's the alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Just if I may, a follow-up to Commissioner Steiner's comment.
Ms. Kessel.
If the, if the desire is for a public vote on the issue, then we should postpone the contract, because if we, if you as a commission pass that contract at the next commission meeting or the one ensuing, you're still contractually obligated to fulfill that contract. So if a public vote is something that is desired, then we should postpone the whole contract as well. And we're looking it up, Ms. Kreip is looking up whether or not the commission can put something on the ballot and not need votes of the public, just to see if that, the legislature, I believe, has that authority. I don't know if our commission ordinances allow that, so we're checking that out right now.
I wanted a better feel from the, from the public, and I requested three times for us to put something into the utility billing. I know we did once, but that was a couple of years ago or so. You know, somehow, we gotta get a question on there, either approve or disapprove, but that doesn't look like it's gonna get done, so maybe this is the next alternative someone has to, has to go through. Maybe we, maybe we give anybody that wants to put another to approve it or disapprove it, give them two weeks to put a petition together, let us know that they're circulating it, and go from there.
Mr. President, I have some comments to add. With all due respect, Commissioner Steiner, I feel like we have been nothing but open and completely inviting of the public on how they feel on this issue. We've been working on it for the last year. Directors Zurov and Mr. Prowse have put in a lot of time and effort and research, and I'm sure that Commissioner Steiner, you are in touch with a different base, but I know a.
Don't assume that I'm against it.
Oh, I'm not.
I just stated that I was for it.
No, I'm talking about the base.
My concern is to get input from a lot of people.
Absolutely.
That's the route I'm concerned about.
And I feel like we have really put the word out there for people to express to us how they feel on this program, and I just have yet to hear one person say we should put this to a public vote, not saying that people don't feel that way, but I think that we have been more than open about the recycling effort, and I have yet to receive that amount of opposition for the program. And I believe our last meeting, we said we were going to vote this meeting and decide if this was, if we're moving forward or not. Mr. Zurov and Mr. Prowse have asked us repeatedly for a direction, and I think it's time that we take it. We need to open this for a vote, and as we stated last weekend, that was the intention.
Well, I don't think we're, the contract's ready to be voted on. Mrs. Trustman.
But the direction, are we moving forward, or?
Well, we approved the direction to go ahead and complete the contract, but we aren't gonna vote on the contract tonight. We haven't seen the contract, and it's completion.
You do want us to revise the contract, because, as you know, I'm on a limited hour schedule, and so if I spend time revising the contract, and then you decide to put it on the ballot, and that's totally fine, but I just wanna make sure we're using effective use of my limited hours.
I think what Mr. Steiner was saying was just a suggestion, that to the public to bring forth. I don't think any of us commissioners are going to put it on the ballot. It should be generated, if it, the groundswell against it or for it is such, then they should bring, bring it to the ballot. But right now, we're going into.
Otherwise, this is gonna take its natural course.
We're gonna, we're gonna get a contract in two weeks, three weeks, vote on that contract. Like I said, my concerns is the tenure contract, but if we have the appropriate benchmarks in there, performance measures, then we have a way to get out of it if the, if it starts to fail, so. I would say continue with the contract negotiations, bring that contract to us. If there's a groundswell from the public and they wanna do something else, they should get on it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Public hearing is closed, Mr. Thorsten.
Can I ask one question?
We already closed the public hearing.
Is a resident of Dickinson out?
Yeah, that's what I stated, it would be, it will be up.
Can be published in the newspaper?
It'll be.
We know what it is. That means, I mean, I think that's fair, that's senior figure.
Come up to the podium. Please state your name for the public hearing.
I'm sorry. On his authority, I just think it's reasonable that the city residents, deciding this contract, they have a right to see the contract. He published it in like the Dixon Press, and so they know that it's coming. I, that's all, I mean, that's only fair, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. And thank you for letting me express my opinion.
Thank you. My suggestion is that we put it on the website, and we make a copy available if somebody doesn't have a computer, I guess, or internet.
I think the current draft is, how many pages, maybe? I can't remember.
Three or four?
Yeah, so, to print a three or four-page contract in the paper would be a little cost prohibitive.
I mean, if we can put it on our website.
Well, we'll make it accessible through either the internet or a copy at City Hall that they can pick up.
Right.
We could put a notice in the paper that, yeah, we could put a notice in the paper once it's complete, that if you have concerns about the contract, you can come pick one up. up at City Hall or view it on the internet.
Or the public library.
Or public library, yes. Okay. I know all these people in here, they're just, I know why you guys all showed up. It's about the license, the liquor license amendment, so just, just, just hold on. We're getting to it. Okay. Our next timetable is the amendment to the liquor license ordinance. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you. We've had a request tonight to hear a, hear of a change in our liquor license ordinance. Right now, we are a little bit more restrictive than state law when it comes to administering the liquor license code. If you want to sell liquor at a restaurant, you have to deliver, excuse me, to deliver that to the table, you have to be 19 years old. State law requires you to be 18 years old and I believe we have some people in the audience who would like to see that changed.
We have listed on the timetable agenda, Mr. Nick DeKalb.
I just took class with her last year, so. Basically, I-
Did you state your name for the record?
Nick DeKalb. I'm a manager over at Buffalo Wild Wings. We cannot hire 19-year-old, or 18-year-old servers because they are not allowed to deliver the beer to customers because you have to be 19 in Dickinson. I'm losing my hosts because they are 18 and they are able to serve at other bigger cities like mine, not Bismarck and whatnot, so I'm losing them to those bigger cities because they can make more money in the same industry, doing the same thing because they're just one year away from it, even though Dickinson law, or like North Dakota law isn't 18 and everywhere else can, they can do it, but Dickinson, unfortunately, we cannot. And I've, I've made a couple of calls to multiple restaurants and they are also on board to moving it to 18 as well. I just think that 19 is kind of pushing it. I've had 16-year-old hosts that have worked for me for two years now. Now they're 18, they can go to war, but they can't drop a beer off at a table. It's just kind of, it's kind of hurting the local businesses. It's also keeping kids from, you know, moving on and making more money or staying in Dickinson and going to Dickinson State. Maybe they're moving to Bismarck because they have more opportunities there, like in the bigger cities. So I feel like Dickinson's kind of behind on that. I understand that, you know, it's more conservative here. You guys, you know, changed it from 12 to 11 that you can serve, so I'm hoping you guys can change it from 19 to 18 so you guys are in line with the North Dakota law. Thank you, that's all I had.
Any questions for Mr. DeKalb?
Mr. President, I just have some comments as a server of many, many years when I was younger. It does put a way on the rest of the staff as well because if you're an 18 server, you rely on the people you're working with to deliver those drinks. And just to clarify, that 18, 19-year-old is not mixing drinks, but picking them up and delivering them. Personally, I don't have any issues with changing that.
Commissioners, any other comments, concerns?
I've had other discussions with other restaurant owners regarding it and they are in favor of us taking a look at it. I'm not really sure why we ever went 19, what the reasoning was, but.
My guess is because the state statute used to be 19 and then they changed-
So we just never changed ours?
We just didn't update.
That makes sense then.
Yeah, it was similar with the brunch thing where the state law went to 11 and then we had ours still at noon for a while and then we updated that during the overall review process.
Commissioners, do you have any, any concerns with lowering it?
I have no concern with lowering it to 18 because ultimately the responsibility and the violation comes down to the management.
Right.
So I, I would, I guess the direction would be to craft the amendment to our liquor ordinance so we can make it 18, so.
I agree.
Have a draft for you at the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, very good.
Wasn't on the agenda, but we'll go with it.
All right, our next public hearing this evening is the truck route and the amendments to the truck route. Mr. Kubis.
Well, I guess they weren't here for the liquor licenses.
No, they weren't.
So the, the truck route resolution, we've talked about it at a few meetings in the past few months and we had agreed to hold this public hearing a couple of meetings ago. If we could dim the lights maybe for some of the people that aren't totally familiar with the truck route that we have. So the blue line on the map is the truck route that was established by ordinance in 2014. Before that, we had some suggested routes, but there was nothing, excuse me, it was by resolution in 2014. So the interstate through town is part of the truck route. North Dakota Highway 22, north of 33rd Street and south of 8th Street South are our truck routes and then 8th Street South, you can see out to the business loop, State Avenue out to the west business loop. And then at the time in 2014, the interim bypass was built in 2014, so we included that as our connection of the truck route. Earlier this year, it's been a while now, that we, we signed a MOU or an MOA with the DOT that concerned the western bypass area. And so the DOT obviously built exit 56 and the permanent truck bypass that goes up 116th Avenue up to 33rd Street. This resolution, this draft of resolution could consider changing our truck route from 30th Avenue by the middle school out to 116th Avenue. It's 30th Avenue on the city addressing system, 116th on the county, it's three miles further to the west and then we would of course add that section of interstate for the trucks on the west side. This has been, you know, I think direction generally for the past several years from when we worked past commissions, worked with the DOT to get the interim truck bypass and then the permanent truck bypass. So there's the, the northwest side that we're discussing some changes to and then the southeast side that we're discussing some changes to. The southeast bypass today consists of 8th Street Southeast, 6th Avenue Southeast. It's officially called 9th Avenue Southeast. There were some changes in the, the nomenclature, the naming of our avenues on the southeast side of town, but generally what's referred to now is 6th Avenue Southeast, Villard and then the east business loop out to exit 64. As we discussed earlier, 8th Street is a DOT project that, that we're undertaking in 2018. We had a public input meeting for that project and at the time, we had sent out mailings to the residents of, of 8th Street. It actually affects a little bit on the, on the west side of Highway 22, but, so we sent out mailings to all the people on the project corridor and we had several verbal comments, people saying we should remove this from the truck route. That's really what pushed that to this point. It had been brought up many, many times over the past several years about trucks on that street, but now that we have a project before us and we did receive public comment, I believe only one written comment though was received regarding specifically the truck route on 8th Street Southeast. So we can't really remove 8th Street Southeast and leave everything else on the east side, so what's, what's bubbled there on the southeast side in red would, would essentially eliminate the entire southeast part of the truck route system in Dickinson. So that, that's the, the short history. If there's any questions or something I'm forgetting to, to add to it before we want to open up the public hearing, be happy to do that now.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
So what is the proposal? Just, just go over that one more time.
Well, the, the proposal is really, was in your packet, this consideration to add and remove routes and it would be removing 30th Avenue on the west side and adding 116th Avenue, again, consistent with, with the DOT agreement we have. And on, on the southeast side, it would either be leave it in place as it is today or remove the truck route or anything else that might come up through the public input process. Maybe there's an outside the box solution to, to this big problem that we have, so.
Mr. Kubis, could we leave a route in place, but approve an exemption for local ag? Because right now, the local deliveries are still, you can still drive on them, local deliveries, we're not cutting down on any local deliveries, we're not cutting down on anything out of that, that east industrial park, southeast industrial park. They're still allowed. What I'm looking for is if there's a way to still have, to take off the, a lot of the big heavy traffic, but allow some of the local ag so they can still make it to the livestock yard or, or access to the grain elevators.
The, the way the resolution was written in 2014 and we didn't change any of those wherethes and thou shelds, it really just says, here's the truck route, how, whatever map we decide on, here's the truck route, local deliveries are allowed off the truck route, you shall take the most direct route from the truck route to your local point of delivery. So right, right now, how it's written, there isn't an ag exemption. It's probably a legal question. I think it's fairly easy to, to look at a stock trailer and say, we're hauling cattle to Stockman's in Dickinson or we're hauling grain. A grain cart's pretty discernible by a truck reg officer, I would think. It's not the way we have it written now, but I, I think it could be.
Let me ask, ask the question, maybe, maybe we can answer it here. Farm trucks and so on, a standard grain truck, and maybe if you guys can help me out there, I think I saw 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight.
That's our definition. If you're 2601, you're, you're a truck in Dickinson.
Is, is a standard farm truck, excluding tractor semi-trailer, is that 26,000 or less? It's more than 26,000? What would be a- Okay. What would be, what would be a standard, what's gross vehicle weight of a standard?
Well, when, when do we hold that until the public hearing? I guess you can, somebody will be up there.
That'd be good.
Yeah. They can address the weightage. Ms. Kreip, on the possibility of amending for allowing local ag traffic?
I think based on the commercial, like the local commercial delivery exemption we have, it would be a similar use because they're essentially going to either drop or pickup. So I don't think it should be an issue if we get really specific about that that's allowed.
I think some of the biggest concern on when industrial delivery, especially like when the wind farm was going up, how it was plugging up Villard, going across the train tracks there, the, the big blades, that's our biggest concern is what it, what it did to that intersection basically.
President Decker, if I could address that specifically, while it, while it wasn't written and isn't written into the resolution today, so all the over, over legal loads need to be permitted, we use the county permitting system and on there, we, we did recognize that as a problem, those extra long loads, I'd call them. And, and we set an overall maximum, citywide maximum load length of 100, I believe it was 180 feet and that was really set by that, that intersection distance at 6th and Villard to the tracks, saying, yeah, this is, it's, it's not ideal, but we could have a real serious incident. So we just implemented that and posted it, so people getting overweight, over with permits through the system see that the whole city of Dickinson's restricted to 100 and I believe it's 180 feet again. And we could add that to the resolution as well or any other distance or length, I should say.
And, and add the extreme overweight too, right?
What we did in the extreme overweight situation, we really followed the DOT's lead on that and 250,000 pounds triggered some things where we've asked all those types of loads that they had to do a structural analysis of, because their axle configurations get pretty unique, different carriers have different heavy haul axles and, and so we, we asked them to do a, a structural load analysis because anywhere you go, if you go south, you're crossing a bridge.
Engineer Kubis, I, I believe that applied to non-divisible loads, is, is that accurate? The 180 length?
Yeah, the, the truck route applies to anything over 2601, but for, for any of the heavy loads, they have to be non-divisible. If they can be divided, they break down a big piece of construction equipment, they have to be divided. If, if you're hauling grain, you, you have to divide that load of grain into a legal load, which is 105.5 during most part of the year unless we have string, spring restrictions on it. It would only apply to non-divisible loads.
So clarify for, for me, Ms. Kreip. As the amendment sits right now, would the ag, the local ag be allowed on these routes that we want to remove from heavy industrial?
Only if it's the most direct route from the truck route. Because if they're like delivering cows to Stockman's for an auction, that would be, there's a legal argument that you could set the intent that that's what that's for, but if they're not taking the most direct route, then they'd still have issues.
Okay.
And less than 26,000 pounds?
If they're less than 26,000 pounds and it doesn't fall under this at all, then they can be wherever they want.
So if, I was in a grain truck and I turned off at loaf and jug and headed east and I was going to the Gladstone, would that qualify as the most direct route to the granery or the elevator in Gladstone?
If you're, is that the, is that the old come and go?
No, that's the old mini mart.
Old mini mart on the south side.
Okay.
So Mayor Decker, with, with the blue line that we have right now today, yes, it's the most direct.
That's the most direct route. So this would, they would be okay?
Yeah, if, if we would eliminate the, the route that's highlighted in red, then it would be State Avenue to the interstate.
Right.
And, and east, wherever they were going.
But we can allow, or we can amend this for the most direct local delivery? Ag delivery?
I, I think we could. I guess I'd like to hear the, the public comment. I know, we, we haven't ran that by, or haven't talked about that as staff specifically, but I think we could.
I think Commissioner Decker, your question was if they were going to Gladstone, that's not a local delivery, but if they're going to the livestock, it may be.
Okay. So we would, if we say we wanted to amend for local ag delivery to include Gladstone, would that have to be an amendment? Because I, I would think that's probably the, and we'll, we'll hear in the public hearing, I would think that's probably the, the elevator that most of our producers go to.
Even if it was a local delivery, they still need to take the most direct route on and off, so they'd still have to go out to states and then to the interstate instead of going up 22 Villard and over. So that part wouldn't matter. They'd still regardless have to take the most direct, so it's going to be roundabout a little bit. You're going to have to go west to go east.
I, I think we need to sit down and sit with some of the ag people and get some ideas from them. I think the end result of what we want and what I want, what we'd like to see is, is you know, we're, we just talked about six tenths of a mile at 4 million bucks for us to redo and then someday if we ever put it in a true truck route to follow the one that we have today, you're looking at another 10 to 15 million. So you know, our concern is the damage that the larger trucks do and I'm thinking that our concern is the long haul trucks, the oil containers, oil tankers and so on that weigh more than say 105,000 gross vehicle weight on a tandem tractor trailer. I'm not sure what those limits are, whatever, but that's the reason that this is for discussion is that we're putting a lot of money into these here and somehow, you know, we have a regulated truck route to the left, to the west, I can handle that and the one to the east cannot and we're going to stick a lot of money into there and, you know, so that's just one issue, so you know, if that's something that we can sit down and speak about is you don't know ag trucks and I don't know ag trucks and so on and I think that's why a lot of those people are sitting there and some of them have agriculture-related businesses in that section. So I, I, you know, if anything, I think we need to sit down and get an idea of what these trucks weigh and what they're hauling and where they would- these trucks weigh and what they're hauling, and whether they would make it through there all right. Does that sound like something that you guys would be available to, a spokesperson for the group and so on, a couple of them?
Well, I guess we'll open up the public hearing and see what they say.
Yeah.
And there are, I think there's plenty of seats, they don't have to be shy. Any, any other comments by commissioners before I open up the public hearing? Questions? I guess you can reserve your questions and comments till after the public hearing. Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. If you have any concerns about our amending the truck route, please come forward, state your name and your concern.
My name is Krista Mori, I work for Fisher Sand and Gravel. We happen to be located right off the Energy Drive, right across from Tiger Truck Route, or Tiger Truck Stop. We submit oversized overweight permits for every load, even just to get onto the interstate. If we have to go to New England, that is the best route. We pay by the ton, by the mile to use that route, to bring any of our heavy equipment. Most of the time, I keep our stuff off of there, I try to respect the roads, I don't want my guys driving over them railroad tracks, I don't want them crossing the traffic, but if we move something down to New England, you're, you're asking us to go an additional, it's 3.8 miles that way from where we are, it's 9.2 to go across the interstate and come back south. If you're paying $5 per ton per mile on 190,000 pound load that is for Stark County or some other job, most of the stuff we do is for city and county jobs, state jobs, then it's an additional at least half hour for my driver's time, we pay $2.90 to keep that truck moving, this is all going to cost us a lot of money. Last year alone, for the city of Dickinson, we bought 296 city of Dickinson permits, we spent $15,820.63 on those permits, just to use the city roads. I feel like we're not the only company that does that, that should be paying for some of this truck route and the problems that we're seeing with the road. Just already till August 1st of this year, we've already bought 370 of those permits, $18,279.82 is what we have spent on those. We also have to buy state permits, county permits, township permits, for all of the jobs that we're doing, and this is going to throw us off just to have to go that. A lot of times, we don't use 22, it's not a very good road, but if we are going straight south of here, it is costing us time and money, and we're trying to do the honest and right thing and submit permits. And a lot of times, we've got drivers even waiting even longer because the turnaround to get a permit on anything that's above 150,000 pounds, i- is, is quite, it's costly. You know, we pay our drivers at least $25 an hour, and they're sitting there waiting for a permit just to even get on the interstate or go south on that truck route. And I understand they're heavy loads, but like I said, we pay for that. And that's all I have to say.
Any questions, comments?
How do you, how do you guys get north?
How do we get north? We use the actual state truck route, that route that's highlighted in blue with the little red circle stuff around it, is not even accessible by North Dakota DOT website. You actually get off on 56 and take it across, it is highlighted green once you put your permit on there. So, we, we haven't used that in, I couldn't tell you how long. And I've addressed it with the county website, because this is the one that is still located on the city of Dickinson, it's still the one that's located on the county, but you can't even use that, and we haven't been for months.
If I could speak to Ms. Mori's comment on, on going north, when we send that MOA or MOU with the DOT, they use a permit system, it's, it's different than the county system, and they have what they call auto routing, where if you give it point A and point B, and you don't meet a requirement, if you, they just, your route is picked for you. If that doesn't work for you, they'll send you somewhere else. So, while this is still on our website, because we haven't changed the resolution, what's 30th Avenue West, if you're, if you're coming from and going to a DOT road, it automatically will auto route.
And you can use via points to do the same thing. It, it, it doesn't automatically auto route, but you can make the state system choose routes. If you know that something is not a good truck route, which I have known for quite a while, that this wasn't anymore going to be accessible for trucks, I happen to live along that, so I understand truck traffic being a problem, but at the same time, we have to have something in place for the companies. I mean, you're telling me if this truck route's taken off, how am I going to get my trucks to George's Tire to even get the tire fixed? I mean, we're right at Energy Drive.
The direct route, just answer that question.
Local, local deliveries are not going to be inhibited.
But if they've got a loader on them?
You could take a truck from Fisher to George's. See, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding that we're going to cut out local deliveries, that we are not cutting out the local deliveries, or local access, direct access.
Well, for, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that, so that's, that's a great concern. My concern is, like I said, when I have to bring, I've got, you know, 50 loads, and most of them are conveyors, they're not even 80,000 pound loads, but they're long, and they're, might be 112 foot long altogether, and I won't be able to use this route, I'm going to have to shoot them around and back south on 22.
But with a 108-foot conveyor, wouldn't it be safer to go the other route and go over the railroad tracks, instead of going across the railroad tracks?
On some of our equipment, that's true, and that's why I said, most of the time, I do route them that way, but there is a lot of times when it is ma, a lot more convenient for us, especially if something's on a trailer, we can just shoot it across and down south. That's a lot of traffic that you're going to be coming across. I mean, I understand that state is all nice and new, but there's also housing along there, there's a lot of traffic on 8th from the other way. And, and that, that affects those people just as much as it does this other truck route that they're wanting to eliminate. And I understand, that road is not as good, it's not as wide, but it's just, it's going to cost us a lot of money, you know, for, like I said, for our city and county projects. And most of the stuff that we go south, we have several pits that are right there off of 40th, and now I'm going to have to shoot them across the interstate and bring them back down to 22, just to get them there. And I could take Lehigh Road, and I could pay 11.8 miles to the city of Dickinson and to Stark County, because that's city and Stark if I go that way, but like I said, if you're looking at anything under 150,000 pound, if you're at 140,000 pound, you're paying 110 to the city plus processing fees, and you're paying 110 to Stark County, anything over that, by the ton, by the mile, so.
My, my, my point was, is to get to 22 north, you have to go that way, right?
Right, and we've had to make that adjustment already, too. It's costing quite a bit.
So I'm not, I mean, that's my point, I mean, if you have to go that way to go north, what's the difference?
We already have to get onto the interstate, so I don't have to split trip my state permits. If I have to go now from my yard, which I normally bring south, I can start my city of Dickinson and then start my state on 22. If I have to go across the interstate, now I have to start my city permit and stop it at Interstate 94, start my state, or, yeah, my state permit, and then I stop it there and pick back up my city permit, and then pick back up my state permit at North Dakota 22.
Valid argument. I, I do know that in five years, we're going to be tasked with the DOT, because we put it off from this, this next year, or this year, next year, the 10th Street East and the route going out to the interstate there, we put that off for five years with the DOT, because we'd made some improvements now, and we thought we'd get our money out of them first. But we're talking five wide there, and curb and gutter, and, and so on, you know, that's going to be 30 million, you know, so I won't be on this board, I don't know who'll be on this board, but they're going to be tasked with protecting those type of investments, you know, and I think when you talk about the cost to you, I think probably later on tonight, we'll hear from some residents about what the truck traffic has cost them and what it does to the value of their residents.
So, my question is, since most of the jobs that we do are Stark County, that we're going south on 22 for our Stark County or city of Dickinson, some of them jobs, if we were to have to go this way and pay extra $5 per ton per mile for our big loads, are we going to get reimbursed back that from the, the Stark County and city of Dickinson for those crushing jobs? I mean, that's, that's the stuff we're...
You mentioned 16,000 and 18,000 in the last couple of years for permits, I don't know if that would cover any damage out there.
You're right, but do you know that most of these are .3 miles just to get onto the interstate?
I understand that.
So if I had to pay to go the...
Point six miles, point six miles tonight, we heard costs us four, four million bucks.
Right, and I understand that, but if I'm going the other way, now I'm paying 4.2 miles by the ton by the mile, and when you start looking at that, these permits from going, you know, maybe $110, $110.24, are now going to cost me $3,000 to drop it the other way.
I understand your situation.
Yeah, so like I said, if, if you look at 370 permits, and even if you was to divide that in half, which most of my loads are going to go north, but for the loads that we take south, even if I'm times in that by 100, you're looking at quite a big, big chunk.
If, if you take the route that the city's recommending going west, do you need a permit?
Yes, I will need a permit just to get onto the interstate, I'll need my state permit.
From the, from the city or the state?
Yes, from the city. I will need .3 miles on Energy Drive to get to I-94 Business Loop, and I'll need .1 to get onto the interstate going east, or .3 miles going to the west. Now, if I exit off, I'm also going to need to get it from State Avenue all the way down, which is, like I said, an additional 4.2 miles.
And that's where we could waive the fee. If that, if you're going to come down State Avenue down that way, we could waive the fee.
Commissioner Decker, I'm not, or, excuse me, Commissioner Steiner, that's a, the project that we participate in is the Western Dakota Energy Association, when we refer to the county program, I believe that's what we're referring to. We have certain obligations to them, I'm not sure if we, I'd have to research whether or not we can waive a portion of that route.
Something to look into.
Yeah, that is something we could look into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perry Jergens from Black Hills Trucking, I, I've got a few concerns about running traffic, we're in the west industrial park. What are we going to do for when we come off of Old 10, going on the Business Loop? I don't know if anybody's taken that route lately, but getting onto there with a car is bad enough, but when you've got a truck, 110 feet long, with the extra traffic, how are we going to control that? Also, anybody going east, getting off, uh, exit 56, going south on highway, on the bypass, that's hard to get off of two, and then we're going to have more trucks go that way, what are we going to do there? Questions? You following what I'm saying?
Yeah, it, it's going to increase traffic, absolutely.
President Decker, if I might add a comment to, to Mr. Jergens' question, on, on the interchange you're talking about coming on Old Highway 10, where it would enter onto the city's truck route, if you were here earlier in the meeting, we did discuss a traffic study, and that's one of the intersections that, that is highlighted, it's kind of been on our, our radar, especially when growth seemed to be, seemed to be endless out west, so it is something that it's a, it's an awkward intersection. It's big, it's wide open, but it's, it's still, it's almost, it's, it is a little awkward. I don't have an answer for you today, but it's, it's something we're intending to look at. And then I, I guess, we did have a meeting, the DOT's collecting input from the city on, on intersection, interchange issues, and I didn't realize, exit 56, there was, there was an issue turning on or off it. So three, three miles, the new interchange?
No, no, I'm sorry, it's exit 59, I'm sorry. Exit 59, if you're getting off, going east, or going west, and you're going to take a left-hand turn to go south, that is horrible there.
That brings you out by Martin Construction.
No, 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 exit 59.
All right. Yeah, unfortunately, you know, it's, it's a great bypass route, but we still do have to use exit 59 to get west to 56, so that the trucks have to go over that bridge if they're going west.
Isn't the DOT also looking at the bridge at 56 as well?
Well, and maybe Administrator Kessel has more insight onto it, it's been discussed quite a bit, I don't know that...
That's hard to turn right, it's hard to turn left there, if you're, if you're going out to any business in that area.
We, we made that comment, we took them out and drove with them and, and showed them, even when it's not very busy traffic wise, it, it's just visually a little bit deceptive about how far you can see sometimes.
Right.
In a car, it's tough. Imagine in a big truck, it's, it's tougher. Also, we, we unload pipe in this town off the rail, right south of the depot, what's our, what's our route out of town? Our shortest route?
It would, it would still be the most direct route.
Which, which one is it? Because we've been in trouble both ways, so.
You know, I, I think the last thing we're going to do tonight is, we're not going to vote on this here situation. Earlier in the meeting, we voted to spend up to $50,000 for a study for the west side. I think that'd be, when they put on the public meetings, that'd be a good one for you to be at. I think we should also get from Catamaras Lee and Jackson, any information we can on this route also.
Yeah, it's, I, I know in the past, and it's probably predates the 2014 truck resolution even, Broadway's your only way out there, but there's probably been some conflicting direction on east or west. I, I guess I, I would say east is the most direct route to one of these blue lines right now, so.
Turning off by the pro build there, that's a not-so-good intersection either. You can't see to the west, and I'm sure there's 100 people behind me that would say not, so anyhow, that's all I had.
Well, thank you for your comments and concerns.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Someone's come forward?
Bruce Crunk. Didn't you say earlier, Craig, that, that, um, the cost on that truck route on A Street would be more like 2 million with a cap of 4 million?
It is, the, the overall project cost was, was $2 million, and I, I, so, here's, here's the math again on, on the project cost. It's roughly a $2 million job now, it would add 200,000 to, to build it for a truck route. Of that 200,000, DOT 80%, so our, our share, 20%, would be 40,000 additional dollars.
For that extra inch of asphalt?
Uh, inch of asphalt, two inches of base, yep.
Four six tenths of a mile.
Approximately, yeah.
And you guys are looking at doing a $50,000 study to go west, when the extra 40 would keep that truck route open?
No, the study is to study the whole city, in the, in the different intersections and the, what Mr. Jergens referred to, a lot of left-hand turns that are, are impossible at times. It's not so much studying if this truck route's going to go west, it's just the flow of traffic down, of traffic on the west side of town.
Okay, well, on these, like the exit ramps, whether it's the east or the west, if you take all that truck traffic off the east truck route, you know, I see them trucks getting backed up into, onto the interstate, and same like over by Pizza Hut, trucks that want to go south, from whichever direction they're coming, they got to be in that small turn lane, and they're going to be sticking out in the driving lane.
So, we, just to address that comment, we did have a, a traffic study in our report that we based our design on, and so, assuming there's always going to be some local deliveries that go to the east, even if it were not a truck route, we estimated a couple percent that, to the subdivision you have, Bruce, just to wherever, local deliveries, it would increase the, the volume of trucks from, I want to say, I should have this written up, 7% to 11%, which is a pretty sizable jump, and that's the overall traffic, trucks as a percentage of the overall traffic. So you're, you're right, you know, you, you'd push some considerable amount of trucks that are already going west, and, and they would have to go west then. But we assume it, it might double the volume, right now there was 190 trucks a day going west, a few more than that, 230 going east, assuming some amount, 40 trucks a day are still going to have to go east, you would double that amount going, going west. And that's an estimate again, but...
And how can a person discriminate between ag and commercial? I mean, you still... I mean, you still gotta haul legal loads or permit them. So, if a farm truck can come down Eighth Street, I mean, you still have to go with five inches of asphalt, or you're gonna tear up the street. So, if they can do it, why can't a commercial truck? There should be discrimination there.
I'm not saying they can or they can't. I just said, I think we could visually tell an ag truck from a non-ag truck if we wanted to make that.
Discrimination?
Your words, not mine. Discernment. But valid points, traffic, you know, if this isn't a route, we do push more traffic to the west, whatever that route would be. Like everything else we do with the budget thing, it's a save here, spend there, spend here, save there.
Well, now I've got a truck to help you out in the industrial park. That's dead center, Eighth Street and Sixth, right on the corner. So, to get in and out, I could take the easiest route, right?
Direct route.
Direct route.
Most direct, yeah.
So, being on dead center, I could either go out to the north and go out by ProBuild, or?
I don't think you'd get any feedback from that, but, you know, there are local businesses on that route. I mean, so you'd have direct access to it.
See, our trucks are loaded sometimes coming in, legal loads. But if you go with a, you know, trying to save forty thousand dollars, and, you know, one inch less of asphalt, the roads ain't get torn up. And it ain't just gonna be my truck, it's gonna be the farm trucks.
And that's exactly what I was referring to when we talked about an increased cost along there, because if we could've put that in, now we got to talk curb and sewer and gutter and so on to improve it. I mean, this isn't new to us here. We've talked five years ago about the truck route. We're even talking about coming straight south before you get onto Sixth, and, you know, building a route around the countryside there. But that got cost prohibitive, you know, so. This is good discussion.
You know, Eighth Street's a nice wide street. You know, the speed limits are twenty-five on it. It makes a perfect truck route. And for that forty-thousand-dollar fee, that shouldn't be an issue.
I don't think it is an issue. I think we've already discussed that we're gonna spend the forty thousand.
Yeah, we already.
We're gonna spend it to upgrade the road.
But it would still be up in question whether it's gonna be a truck route or not?
Depending on what we allow on it. And you're in the heart of it, so your direct out, you would be fine.
So, like with my trucks, if I'm hauling commercial, I'd have to take the direct route out. Well, I guess either way, but if I haul ag, I ranch south of town. So, if I'm hauling hay, that wouldn't be an issue taking that road then?
No, if you gotta go south, most of the direct route from your place would be going south. Most direct north would. You got a direct route both ways.
But, so it is the understanding that there are probably five inches of asphalt on that road then?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Schnell with livestock, here in Dickinson. And we definitely have a vested interest in what happens in this situation. The people that we deal with are almost strictly owner-operators, and that might be a farmer, might be rancher, but even most of our truckers are owner-operators as well. And the only reason I make that point is because when they have added costs, and it might not look like a whole lot, but you know that some days when things aren't working right, it can end up to be a lot, because you're adding more corners and you're adding more distance into it. They're the only ones that don't get to pass that cost on. These farmers and ranchers, that's their cost. In almost every case, they're in a hurry already, and then they get in a position where they get stuck in a corner somewhere, or there's an accident. It's just, it's gonna cause a tremendous amount of problems for our customers, as well as the grain elevators and others. You know, hopefully, something can be worked out, you know, by allowing ag trucks to come in would be great. And keep in mind, when you're talking about just numbers of trucks, whatever that number is, keep in mind that those ag trucks, in almost every, in almost every case, are going one direction loaded and one direction empty. So, they're not going to tear up the streets that bad when they're running empty, so it's really half as much. And that's true in almost every case, whether they're coming to load cattle or bringing cattle in. Either way, and I think it would be the same for the grain elevators. Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Mrs. Schnell? Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Anyone else from the public?
My name is Ben Coon. I'm a resident in Dickinson, and we also farm south of town. And my first question would be, what is a local route? If I have a field of sunflowers a mile away that I'm hauling to Fargo, is that local?
I would say no.
Okay, if that's the case, I mean, there's a few issues with this. First of all, you're pushing all that traffic on State's Avenue, and any trucker that's ever driven that route knows when you get over that new bridge on the interstate, you're going downhill, and you gotta stop at that stoplight. And the other thing you notice, the busy times of the day are in the morning, right at noon, and right when school gets out. And all those drivers are young drivers, and they're always in a hurry, and they're trying to pass you. And once we get over that hill, truckers are gonna be going slow, ten miles an hour in a thirty-five mile-an-hour zone. That's gonna be a zoo there, because there's gonna be trucks waiting at the end of the light. There's gonna be cars in the right-hand lane trying to pass the trucks that are in the left-hand lane, and then they need to get back in the left-hand lane before they can go straight. And then the trucks are gonna be waiting there, I mean, and then the cars won't be able to merge in. You know, that's a public safety issue, especially with a lot of students driving that way. And, you know, I guess I won't talk about the other issues the guys talked about already, but they're all relevant for local farmers. And I don't really know what the issue is. If it's the forty thousand dollars you have to spend, it sounds like that's not the issue. If it's the local residents on Eighth Street, and everybody knows who the resident is that drives that route, you know, it's not uncommon to find him hiding in the bushes or the trees with a camera or radar gun, trying to find whoever he perceives to be breaking the law. You know, he posts his own speed limit signs, puts signs in the middle of the road. That can't be safe. And I actually drove both routes. Going the route we go now on Eighth Street and east, we pass from two hundred feet on both sides of the road, you pass approximately nineteen houses. And there's about seven or eight of those smaller apartment buildings on the south side of Eighth Street. Going along that State's Avenue road, you pass thirty-two houses, and there's about nine large apartment complexes you drive by. You know, so to take that one very vocal residence, you know, to try to appease him at the cost of everybody else, I think is a very un equitable way to do that. I mean, someone that is that devoted to finding misery in traffic by his house will continue to do so regardless of any decision you make. And you wanna talk about local, or big numbers, you know, for local farmers, for every one thousand acres of grain we grow, we sell around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of products. We buy around two hundred thousand dollars worth of inputs. That's for every one thousand acres. Now, so that forty thousand dollars, that's honestly a slap in the face to us. I mean, what it feels like?
Mr. Coon, I wanna establish this right now. We're gonna spend the forty thousand dollars to upgrade the road. Nobody has to bring that up anymore.
Okay.
We're gonna spend the forty thousand dollars.
So then?
And this is not about one resident. This is about the wear and tear on our roads. Did you see what one road's gonna cost us in West Ridge? Four million dollars.
What about Eighth Street? West Ridge is.
An art.
Yeah, well, that's not the route we're talking about.
No, but that's, I'm just using it as an example, what it costs the city to build a road. We're trying to minimize the impact. I'm not against ag driving on it. I've stated that repeatedly. But I would like it so it's just local delivery.
Well, what it sounds like, because local farmers don't deliver local. We deliver across the nation anymore. What it honestly sounds like is, yeah, we support you local guys, and you're welcome to come to town, bring your checkbooks, drive your pickups, but don't dare drive your trucks through town, because we'll find you if you do. I mean, it goes both ways. We deal with city residential inconveniences every day. I mean, there's always cars parked on the road, and people are walking their dogs, and you're trying to maneuver around them. We pick up trash in our ditches and fields all the time. And one of the big ones that we do is we offer access for hunting to residents. You know, I mean, if we start losing your support, you're gonna lose our support. And in a lot of this shop local and support your local businesses, why should we wanna support towns in our local city when you guys don't support us? And this really resonates hard with me. And this year, I grew twelve different crops. All twelve of them need to be shipped east. This'll affect me, I mean, every business day I have. And all for, if it's not the money, then it's for those few residents on A Street. Well, you're gonna be affecting more residents going the proposed route than this route. So, I guess I would just like to say I'm strongly opposed to this. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Coon?
If I could make one comment to Mr. Coon's statement about local deliveries and that his deliveries aren't local. You know, that's the way the resolution was written in 2014. I don't know if it could be crafted differently, but I think we would have a hard time enforcing a delivery. To find out they're not local, we need to follow them out of our jurisdiction.
And we don't have the personnel to do that.
That's why it was set up for that, is like, we're just, we're gonna look at Dickinson, and here's our jurisdiction, allow local deliveries. Understanding that, you know, our economy isn't necessarily local. It's intertwined with the Gladstone Terminal and other terminals further east than that. So, there might be some wording to look at there, but I think the reason local deliveries was in there, because that's what we can, that's what we can do, that's what we can enforce, that's our domain, so.
Anyone else from the public like to come forward?
Chad Russo, I live southeast of Dickinson, but I have to come through that area all the time. I also farm both southeast of town and north of town. And I've been rerouted already, we can't go down Tenth Street, and I've respected that and gone to the east. But I guess I don't wanna take a perspective on where it should run, where it shouldn't. I think I wanna take a look at the common sense aspect of a truck. And also, if you take a look at the traffic in the mornings, where people are going, where people are going to school, where the new middle school's gonna be up north of town, the traffic is gonna go on States, okay, and it's gonna go up that direction. If you go in the mornings, people are not taking their kids to school going on the east truck bypass, okay? They're going to the west. If we double the truck traffic, like Mr. Coobis said, to the west, the backup that we're going to have on States coming over that top of that hill, and add a little bit of ice to it for a little bit of fun in the wintertime, when you're backing trucks up going up the hill and coming down the hill, you add a safety factor. The other thing, too, in the common sense aspect of it, when we take a look at coming into town from the south into town on Highway Twenty-Two, it is always safer to take a right-hand turn versus taking a left-hand turn going against traffic that's coming towards you. So, if we follow the left hand and we go to the west of town, we've got a nice turning lane going west off of Eighth onto States. But the big hang-up and the big safety aspect that I see by putting twice as many trucks is when you come on the west side of Alard, and we gotta take a right-hand turn, or left-hand turn, excuse me, against a guy who wants to make a left-hand turn to go to the high school, and he's got his car right to the front of that yellow line right on the crosswalk, you're gonna have congestion right there, and you're gonna have people that are gonna get the front end of their cars driven over, okay? If we go to the east like it is already, we've got a nice turning lane for guys that are going west on Eighth. We've got a nice turning lane that allows us to go to the north. We get to ProBuild, there's actually a turn built in to the right, so you've got that safety factor there. And then once you get on the interstate, you can take another right, and you got the safety. So, the flow of traffic is more natural going to the east for that traffic. We push all that to the west, you've got a real congestion point on the west end of Alard, and I think you've got a higher safety traffic incident there. So, just from a safety perspective, I still think you're better off allowing your trucks to run on the east route and go into the board.
Okay, any questions?
My name is Jim Bob, and I'm not a resident of Dickinson, so thank you for letting me speak. I am a manager, Grain Division Manager for Southwest Grain. And I actually had some numbers for you on trucks we do, that run, that we hire on that east bypass, and the cost it would cost to go around there. But I'm gonna be the first person to come up here and volunteer to be on your ag research committee on this subject. Hopefully, somebody else in here volunteers too. But I think, listening, there's two questions. What is local, and what's the city's obligation in this matter? I'd like to be able to sit down with you guys and bring that to a head. Got some suggestions on both. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Tyler Shook. Well, I guess I farm south of town. I live in the city of Dickinson. And I actually literally farm in Dickinson. I farm on State's Avenue. And you guys already have that marked as a no-truck route, you know, going past the new middle school. And there's some problems with that, because what happens is, you know, like, for me, I mean, I know I have to go there. I mean, I literally farm right by those apartments, so I'm gonna drive there with the truck or the combine or whatever, this, you know, tractor. But what's gonna happen is if you guys put up signs there, you're gonna say, that's fine, local ag can go on that, and it'll still be a truck route, and that'll be okay. But when there's a sign that says no trucks, how is law enforcement gonna see that? And how is someone who's not necessarily sure, once there's a sign that says no trucks, that wasn't at this meeting, if they're sure they can even go on there anymore? I guess that's my concern, because if I, like, even there, you know, when they put up that sign by the middle school that said no trucks, and there's a sign in the turning lane, no trucks, you know, I mean, I second-guess it. Should I go on State's Avenue? That's not really necessarily safe either, to go straight up State's Avenue with the truck and then try and come in that way. I personally feel like it's safer to go on the truck route and come in this way, you know. But what am I supposed to do? Am I gonna get ticketed? That's, you know, my concern.
If I could, you know, I'm trying to answer for PD, you know, in the truck regulatory standpoint. The guy out in the field, it's really difficult for him to. He wants it black and white. He doesn't wanna have to discern. I wouldn't wanna have to discern, is this local or not? So, I think oftentimes, they end up following a truck. To see, you know, if we have a grain truck running through downtown Dickinson on this street right here, hey, that's not a local delivery. But in your case, you know, I think they might have to follow that truck for a while and say, oh, if he pulled into this field, local delivery. And so, it does, it makes it difficult, I think. As much as we try not to make it subjective, sometimes that officer out in the field has to look at the situation, assess it, maybe follow that person for a little while and say, oh, yeah, they made a local delivery, they stopped at their field, where other people might be trying to go. We don't wanna encourage trucks. We understand that there's a time when there's gonna be a truck on probably every street in Dickinson though. And so, we tried to keep the resolution simple, and we did sign it as no trucks when the school came up. I think it was signed no trucks well before that, when the road was narrow and falling apart too. But it, some of those instances, we just have to, you know, to meet, discuss, talk to the operator, and go, hey, this is how we're gonna work this out. We did the same thing with C-12 Energy a year or so ago. They said, hey, we got wells in Dickinson now. How do you want us to access those wells? We sat down with them, we developed the best route. It wasn't our truck route, but it was their local delivery. And we worked it out. We haven't had an issue with the truck coming into any of those sites yet, so. Some of it takes a little, a little time, little effort, little face-to-face, too.
So, let me ask this here. What is the number-one reason we're looking at this today? Is it because of the complaints from the residents? Or is it an offer from the DOT? What instigated this whole situation?
Commissioner Steiner, I think it's both, really. The northwest was an agreement we made with the DOT to utilize that as our Highway Twenty-Two truck bypass route. With the school being built, I think most people agree it made some sense. Even though it's further out of town, it made some sense to use that. There was a big investment made. The southeast side of town was, we had a project coming up through the public input process, and before our formal public input process, we had heard complaints about that being a truck route. I can say, on our capital improvement plan, we don't have any truck route on there, and we can, no new truck route. So, we're trying to do the best with the hand that we're dealt here, on the south side of town specifically, so.
Well, and the reason I ask it, I know we got one individual that I hear from regarding the traffic down there and so on, and he lives down there. But that's the only one I hear from. And I haven't heard from anybody yet tonight, and I don't know if those people are here. If they are, I hope they come up and talk. Otherwise, I'm inclined to think that, let's improve what we got for these individuals that are actually using that road and need it to make their living. You know, because I think that's where this all came from, from Eighth Street East was the start. And, you know, we've tested the traffic, the speeds through there, we had the, we recorded them. And I think we had one or two vehicles that what we would consider. them, and I think we had one or two vehicles that, what we would consider excessive speed, 80 miles an hour. Okay? And that's probably just a kid out there seeing how fast the car would be. So the point was the speeding. But what we found out, wasn't a lot of speeding out there. The other complaint from the citizens down there would be the Jake brakes, et cetera, and so on. So I don't know how you address that in some of these, some of these things. So, you know, I bear with us. We're gonna meet with K L J. We want you to be there. We're gonna take everybody's thoughts and so on, and try and arrive at something that's gonna work for everybody. I mean, that's what we do. That's what we're gonna have to do, so.
Okay, one last comment. I mean, I guess I don't understand why you guys want to eliminate something, but you're gonna build it to support trucks anyways, but then make it a secret truck route for ag only, but not label it that way. It's gonna be really confusing. And going west is, it takes another half an hour, and it is dangerous. I mean, everybody's already said that, I guess, but, thank you.
I think the other concern was is the intersection at Probuild, right?
Yes.
Trucks turning left across two lanes of traffic to go south, back up three, four, five feet.
Possible train backup.
Train coming across the tracks. I mean, I'm at Probuild three, four times a day, so I see trucks actually turning south, turning in the eastbound left-hand turn lane, cutting that corner like that. I've witnessed it myself. I mean, I think that intersection is pretty unsafe there, too. You only have 100, what, is it 180 feet to the tracks?
About 180, yeah.
So do you make, what way do you make the east northbound only and the south downtown only, so there's only ever right-hand turns?
I don't know. I'm just saying, I think that's another, that's another concern that I think everybody's seen. I mean, you look at the curbs and stuff over in that, on that intersection. They drive over the sidewalks, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, well, turning, turning left by, when you're going up States is no better.
Right.
I mean, I drive truck a lot of days a year, to be honest with you, and there's a lot of times, there's people, I mean, I'm all the way up against the curb and up against that light to clear everybody that's trying to turn left, and the traffic there is normally worse, it seems like, especially in the morning than it is by Probuild. And at least there, we have a turning lane to go back out to the interstate. Coming in, I'll agree, but most guys coming in are empty. They're not coming in loaded, which is another safety factor. We're going out loaded, which if we gotta come into that intersection, coming over that bridge, I'll agree, like Colin Durham this winter, we were coming from the west side of Dickinson coming in, that hill is icy, you know, coming over. We didn't get much snow to talk about, so.
I think we can all agree there's no perfect answer. That's why we have these public hearings, so.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
My name is Dave Anderson, and my son and I have a trucking company, and we use 8th Street all the time. We live on the far end, right out by the water treatment plant. And we have to run our trucks in and out of there at all times. And not very often do we bring them loaded, but sometimes on weekends, guys come in on Friday night, can't unload until Monday, they bring them home and park them. And we have to be able to get them in and out, and they're normally legal loads. But if, if we can't use 8th Street, we're gonna have to go like two, three, almost three miles south, and then over to 22 and come back in. I mean, it's.
Which would be a good route for a truck route. That's the route we're actually looking at.
Well, yeah, but it's an all gravel road, and it's a rough road.
You'd rebuild it. You would build a truck route there.
Okay, we're looking at 109th Street is what we live on.
I know what you're saying. You've gotta go out of your way.
Yeah. Yes, that's, and my other concern is that, not by you, but U B C. When you're coming in on Allard and have to make a left-hand turn there, with that building that's sitting right there, almost on the street, the cars have to get up, I mean, out to where you can't miss them. They have to back up in order for a big truck to make that corner. And that's, that's a dangerous corner.
That's, that's what I was talking about. I mean, you can't see around that building they got to, to the west. So you have to inch out into the lane just to take a left-hand turn there, and if a truck's coming, you do, you have to back up. Like I said, I'm there two, three times a day, so I've seen it happen all the time.
Yeah, it happens all the time. You gotta wait, and some people just sit there and look at you like, go ahead and hit me, you know? Well, what do you do? You're parked halfway around the corner, you can't go anywhere.
Right.
But you're in help in your discussion, talking about that, that situation.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Al Heiser. I'm Stark County Road Superintendent. I've been, had lots of questions, and I believe a lot of the questions were answered about the local truck route. I really think it's gonna be hard, you guys would be really hard-pressed to police, who's a farmer, who's whatever. I think you've got it, like Mayor said, you're gonna fix the road properly. I think that's wonderful, because you gotta build for the future. You know, like, with everything that's happening around town, the subdivision, the K L D subdivision, if he gets a customer in there that rents a building, buys a lot, moves 180,000 pound loads in there, you gotta build a road to get him in or out, the closest route, so. And Mr. Dekker talked about the wind farm, plugging up them intersections. Well, I was very involved in the wind farm and permitting them loads. That was totally an option, to let them come that route. We would've let them go out to 116, take the gravel over there, but that was their shortest route, so, you know, if that ever happens again, you have that right to tell them there's other routes to get there, so. And I seen that many a times, that road was plugged up, they were backed up, it was a real hazard, but next time that happens, there's other ways to get around. And other than that, I can see if, if you leave this as local deliveries, what's gonna happen? A lot of the grain coming out of New England is probably gonna hit a county road south of town, they'll get over Enchanted Highway. Grain coming out of the north country will probably come down to 32nd Street, jump over on 107 to make the shortest route. I mean, the truck route is where it is, but I'm thinking if you're gonna put too many restrictions on these roads around town, they're gonna take the shortest, hit the county roads, and then we'll have other issues with dust and different types of things. But I think you guys are on the right track of trying to make it work for everybody. I know it's a real difficult situation to be in, to make everybody happy, but I really think that in the end you'll make it work. And I also would like to volunteer to be on that committee to help plan the bypass around, or to help wherever I can.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Chuck Grasser at Fisher Sand and Gravel. So if it's the shortest route, and you're only delivering where you have to, we shouldn't have to buy a permit to get off the interstate to go to General Steel with our equipment then, right? That's a local delivery. We're taking our equipment at .3 miles to our yard. Why should we have to have a permit? It's a local delivery. It's the shortest route.
For overweight, we permit every load, whether it's on or off the truck route.
But even over length or anything?
Uh, I can't say that every.
I know Crystal was out there, and she probably knows more than anybody in this whole room about permitting.
Yeah, she fills out a permit application.
She does the whole thing for the whole nation.
But, but, but we don't.
And why can't you say only ag is, can be okay? How many pounds per square inch do you have on tractors?
We haven't said that. We discussed that.
Right, but tractors and square inches per tire? How much are these grain carts? How much are combines, tractors?
Well, we.
It's kinda like the other guy said, it's discrimination, you know?
But we're sure not trying to.
The whole town don't just live off of ag. There's aggregate, there's everything else that makes the town go, too. A lot of your trucks are 80,000, and the city ordinance is up to 105.5.
Right.
And if you're gonna build a truck route and only say certain people can go, then that's discrimination. You're gonna build that route, anybody should be able to use it.
I don't think we've made any decision.
I mean, you're gonna fix the road for just certain people?
We haven't made any decision.
Right.
It was a suggested topic. A lot of people are jumping to conclusions tonight.
Well, they gotta protect our interest that we put on an extra nine miles to get a load to the south side of town. They don't run cheap per mile, nothing does. And that 26,000 pounds, you can do that with a pickup and a gooseneck trailer and a few head of cows. So that's a pretty light load. And if you put all the traffic going over to States Avenue, you gotta look, that's an ambulance route to get to the hospital. You start blocking that up from the interstate to get to the ambulance route, you had more trucks there. I guess I'd wanna less trucks there and be able to get an ambulance to the hospital than worry about a $40,000 road.
Yeah, I'd just like to state to the group, I mean, this is, this is why we have this public input process. It's long and, and sometimes feels tedious, but we don't know everybody's route. We don't know the economics of all your businesses, and we need to hear that to help make informed decisions.
I mean, where that truck route is in the south, it's goofy, put it there in the first place.
Yeah, like I said, we're.
Most cities I've been through, I've trucked most of western United States with equipment and stuff, too. You don't put a truck route down Main Street and a couple hundred feet from a road across. It should've been out east in the first place. But until you get one of them, you can't shut this one off to all their fuel dealers, all the, everything else.
Like I said, we're playing with the hand we're dealt here to some degree. We don't have any new truck route. Like I said, it's hard to change these without having a plan. Our plan now is dealing the other, you know, playing with the other half of our deck if we wanted to eliminate one side, so.
And all the money you charge on permits, you should be able to fix that road hands down, not worry about it.
I don't know if it would quite pencil out, but.
Gotta put it on some streets. Just while it's on the truck route, we're, be well-used. That's where our traffic problem is.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hank Jurgens, and I'm opposed to it, too. I live along 8th and 8th. My daughter goes to school at the high school. We got the Heart River School there. We're adding 230 more trucks on that road, and it's dangerous. I'm a truck driver also, I haul grain. I think the east way is the way to go.
All right, thanks. Anyone else from the public?
Rick Kleinrechter with East Stand Auto. We use the truck route all the time, from coming in from New England or going to New England. Hopefully, with just the delivery in town, I think we'd get by with most of our stuff. But we do use the truck route all the time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Got a question. Did I speak to you, or was it your dad today?
That was me.
That was you?
Yep.
You had a good point, when there's an emergency and an accident on the south, or an accident somewhere where you gotta go and retrieve the vehicles and so on, you know, you gotta get there.
Yes, we respond a lot.
Could be life missed, someone underneath the vehicle, that type of thing, need someone to get out of there. You know, that was a good, we had a good discussion.
Yep, yep. If we do end up going the designated route, it would add 20 minutes to a tow or recovery or anything. But if it's an emergency thing, I would think we're gonna be exempt just to go down it. I don't think that would be.
I think that goes along the line of common sense and so on.
We do use the truck route every day, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Eddie Prowse, and we truck a lot of cattle, the boys and I, my brothers and my sons, and we use the truck route all the time. And over there on 8th, where that speed limit and that was at, they got police out there with radar, and there's nobody speeding by there. And there's a couple times where I come down the road, and he stands there and he slows down. It slows down. He can't take the noise. I know the aluminum trailers, and the roads are rough there. Aluminum trailers, they rattle quite a bit. He doesn't like it. There's other places in town, why doesn't he sell his property and move to a different location? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Anyone else from the public?
We have a trucking company that is out off of 8th Street out there, and I'm concerned is if we have trucks coming in from Billings continuing on to Fargo, that's not gonna be considered a local delivery. Now, we're not gonna be able to bring our trucks to our shop.
It's local.
And the other side of that is, if you go ahead and pass this, what's to say the people on States Avenue haven't heard this discussion and go, okay, we don't want trucks down States at all now? Now where are they gonna go? That where does this stop?
Mr. Anderson, could you say where your business is again? It's on 8th?
I'm off of 8th, 8th Street out to 109th Avenue. We're half a mile south. So you're gonna tell me that when my trucks come in from over the road, that they can't come to my shop now?
No, I don't think that's ever been said.
Well, like I said, a lot of people are jumping to conclusions.
They just wanna direct route to your place.
I'm sorry?
They just wanna direct route to your place. I don't think we're, I don't think we're saying anything about they can't go to your place.
It wouldn't be considered a local delivery, and you're taking the truck route out of it.
So you got a truck coming from 900 miles away?
Well, 500 miles, whatever it may be, but continuing on through Dickinson.
So you aren't concerned about the extra three miles of the 503 miles if he's gotta come down that route? You're just concerned about what he would be category at that?
No, 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 we're, we're literally having to go down 8th Street.
Right, you're east-west.
Yes. And, and again, if you pass this, who's to say the people on States Avenue aren't gonna say, we don't want trucks here now either? Where, where does this stop? I mean, this is a common sense truck route, the way it is right now. You've already agreed that you're gonna spend the extra money to put into the extra payment on it.
Let me answer your question about States Avenue. We already have those complaints about trucks on that, okay? This isn't new.
Absolutely. But where, but where does this stop?
Oh, exactly.
So you're, you're gonna get rid of our east, east route, put everybody on the west route, and then what?
Sometimes you gotta figure out who's the choir that you're preaching to.
Well, this, this is affecting the city of Dickinson in all aspects.
Exactly. All, yeah, you're right. We're in a tough position here. We're trying to figure it out. I think we will.
Anyone else from the public like to speak to this?
My name is Myron Everts. Are any of you familiar with North Platte, Nebraska?
Been there once.
Once? Okay. North Platte kinda overlays Dickinson, otherwise it's just flipped upside down. Interstate runs through it. The business is on the north side of the North Platte, just the opposite of Dickinson. Well, they, they've had, they've got a truck route, yet you can still go down through town. They never shut the truck, the trucks off. But they've got a bypass going all the way around. It doesn't have any jogs in it, like when you go out on 8th Street or whatever, going west, where you gotta turn on that corner in that cement thing there. Anybody coming with a set of doubles from the north coming down there, if, if the traffic coming from the other way is against you, you'll bounce that pup crop over that thing. I mean, if somebody's beside you, gonna make a left-hand, gonna make a left-hand turn the other, or right-hand turn. You know, I think the problem is, how many, does any of you have a CDL?
Nope.
No. That's the problem. You guys need to get in one of these trucks and just ride around a whole day long, whether it be somebody driving hauling gravel or somebody hauling grain. Then you're gonna see what the problem is. When you're sitting up above there and you're watching some snot-nosed kid come try to sneak in on ya, and you've gotta deal with that, and the next guy's just minding his own business, but you have to pay attention to what's going on over here. You guys would really learn a lot by riding in a truck for a day. Another thing, we haul wide loads from the Canadian, just about the Canadian border to the southern Oklahoma border. I have to say Dickinson, and I'm speaking not for the truckers from around this, this area, but for the guys that are coming from someplace else. On the south side of town, you got these two signs like this, truck route. Guys are come wheeling into town and they're looking, well, okay, this road is four lanes wide going north. They're not seeing them little signs. You need to have something that's out there. We go through towns that have three to 10,000 people, they got a bigger sign than Dickinson, North Dakota does. And I get other guys that are in the same business we are, they call and ask, well, how do we get around there? I says, well, look at them little truck routes. Surely you gotta pick them. They're pulling a wide load behind ya, you're watching that, and you're watch somebody don't cut you off in the front. And I, years ago, I called on that, but whoever asked, and whoever took my questions, I'm surely just blew it off. And that's all I have to say. But take a good look at North Platte. Google it.
Okay.
Come from the top, you'll see the truck route around that town.
Thank you, Mr. Everts. Anyone else from the public?
My name is Bruce Antranco. I'm with Butler Machinery, and obviously we're out on the east, um, business loop there. Uh, my only question is, you know, we've got three tenths of a mile and one intersection that we're concerned about, but we're gonna reroute all that industrial traffic from an industrial area now up State Street through a residential area and, um, you know, we listened to all the comments about the difficulties in making that left-hand turn, you know, off of State's onto the, uh, the road to go west. Uh, it just, it's confusing to me why we would wanna redirect that traffic from an industrial area already through a residential.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else from the public, we'll close the public hearing. I think we've heard a lot of good, uh, input tonight. I think Mr. Steiner has volunteered to head up some kind of committee. So, um, I'll let him work with, uh, Mr. Kessel. And it was, there was a lot-
It'll actually be, uh, K L J's discretion.
Okay, well, um-
And we got individuals that wanna be in-
We have a lot of, uh, a lot of good input, and I appreciate all of it. I just don't want anybody leaving here jumping to any conclusions. We're not shutting any road down right now. This is an ongoing debate, and we're trying to do what's best for the, the city and the surrounding public. That's why I brought up having at least an egg exemption, but we might have to look at, you know, some other, we might have to leave the route as-is. What Mr. Kubis said about increasing the, uh, truck traffic, um, right now, that's, that's weighing on me that why would we wanna do that? Especially when that now with the middle school and everything is, is busy as it is. So, it was, it was good to have this public hearing. Uh, like I said, don't jump to any conclusions. We're gonna come to a, um, um, a resolution on this and, and try to work it out for the best for the surrounding public, uh, not only of Dickinson but the whole county. Uh, commissioners, any comments before we move on?
I would echo those same sentiments. You know, we're, we are exploring all of the options, and I can remember not that long ago when I was on the commission that we didn't even have a truck route in Dickinson. East, west, north, or south. And so, you know, a lot of strides have been made, a lot of money's been invested on the state, local, and county level to help alleviate the traffic, and this public input was to do just that. Get your public input so that we can come up with the best feasible way to route traffic in and out of Dickinson. Again, thanks for all of your input tonight.
Any other commissioners, any comments? Well, we will move on then. We have a six o'clock, which is now seven o'clock. Taxi discussion. Mr. Mr. Kessel, do you have any, uh- Can we take a break?
Sure.
Yeah, just announce it. Yep, yep. I'd like to get a motion to take a five-minute break. I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a five-minute break. We'll resume our commission meeting from Monday, September 18th, 2017, and our next timetable is a taxi discussion by Ms. Patrick.
Hi, I'm Megan Patrick. Um, I actually, oh, you gave it to him, okay. I'm the chief executive officer of Central State's Dispatch, and I wanted to talk to you guys tonight a little bit about public safety. I'm gonna tell you a story about something that recently happened, but first I wanna explain what you have in front of you. Um, this is a dispatch refusal. In the history of my company, um, even when it was E-Cab, uh, we have only had a history of actually issuing three of these. A dispatch refusal is a pretty serious thing. It's us severing ties with another company or driver, and it is, um, it's a very legal moment. It means somebody has to strip their car down and take it off the road. And they can run it as their own business, but they cannot run it as mine because they're damaging my reputation. In January, we issued one of these to the city of Bismarck, uh, because we had, we had a driver that failed to provide us with the, the, um, proper permitting for the city of Bismarck. He decided to go out there and run before we actually had the permits, um, and he was refused dispatch. Just recently, um, May 24th, or no, May 24th, I think June 17th, uh, one of our owner-operators hired a gentleman, whose name I can say because he's now been sentenced, um, by the name of Richard Wade Beach. That was not his name. We did a background check on him, and it came up as a dead guy. Inconclusive and dead. Luckily for us, it flagged the FBI. Richard Wade Beach had 48 warrants out in eight surge states. That's all of the surge states. That means that a surge state is a state in which someone can be tried equally in one state next, like they, they all work together. But basically, um, on June 25th, I was coming into Dickinson, and, um, one of the reasons that I gave you this is to let you know that on July 5th, this document was issued to both the city, it was issued to our attorneys, it was issued to the police department, um, and it was issued to all of our shareholders and our board of directors. On June 25th, I got a call from a gentleman, and I was just happened to be coming off the interstate into Dickinson, in the Walmart parking lot screaming that this driver was threatening to kill him with a baseball bat. I had heard from one of our owner-operators in Bismarck that the first day the gentleman was employed, he jokingly went out and bought a baseball bat. So, I thought that was an interesting way to confirm that he has in fact bought a baseball bat. I could hear him screaming outside this gentleman's car that he was going to bash his head in if he didn't move his effin' car, and the driver was going the wrong way up a one-way and insisted on being belligerent and accosting the customer from Walmart who was going out the right way. At this point, we warned the owner of the vehicle that they needed to terminate this driver, that the driver was showing excessively aggressive tendencies, that his background check had come back inconclusive because he was dead. And the owner laughed and said that it was, that the driver didn't actually do that, even though by that time I was standing in the Walmart parking lot watching it. About a week later, we started to receive complaints that he was frauding people's credit cards, also that the owner of the vehicle was frauding credit cards. I'm gonna make a note of that because the gentleman was actually arrested and extradited back to Connecticut for credit card fraud and theft of identity, among other things. So we actually had to shut off our credit card capability. We weren't able to allow customers to use our credit card system anymore because of the fraud that was occurring. At this point, um, he started doing other things that were, were violations of our company policy. Um, he started threatening our drivers. We got over 100 complaints from customers that he was threatening them with baseball bats. I have no idea why they didn't report him to the police like Rita told me to tell them to do. But all in all, this was a very, very bad guy. And, um, background checks are a very, very important part of having taxis in your town, and I'm gonna tell you why. Um, taxis are the number-one thing for money laundering. They are also the number-one drug-selling. You can sell drugs out of taxi, nobody pays attention, it's a taxi. You can drive a taxi drunk, nobody pays attention to a taxi. It's a taxi. It's not supposed to do that. So, I really would like to caution you guys. The gentleman in question, when they, when the landlord went to clear out his things, they found hundreds of credit card applications that were not in his name. Two more days here and he would've robbed half the city. This kind of, um, this kind of person exists, and to the city of Dickinson, you guys are all honest and you're nice. And to a nice person, I see you all as honest, nice people, but to a monster, you're dumb and gullible, and they're gonna take advantage of that every chance they get. And I hate that, that bothers me really bad. So what I would like to see, um, is maybe you guys can update the taxi ordinance to include background checks and maybe drug tests. This is an occupational license, a chauffeur's license in cities. Drivers have to pay to get it, just like a food worker's card. Um, when I got my chauffeur's license in the city of Anchorage, I had to go out and get a drug test, had to pay for it, and I had to submit the results of that to the city. I had to pay for my background check with the Alaska State Troopers. I had to pay to go do a DOT medical. That is also important. You cannot have drivers that can't see or have severe diabetes that are gonna pass out behind the wheel with a passenger in the car, 'cause unlike a semi-truck, people cost more money. So I just would caution you guys to kind of keep in mind that these types of people exist. And also, um, when we issue a dispatch refusal, it, it really, to us, that's us warning you, this guy's bad news. We can't stop him from driving, we don't issue the license. We can stop him from driving under us, but we're gonna tell you this is why. We terminated this company for frauding credit cards, and we gave it to you in writing. And when we turn around and I have to call the FBI two months later after multiple complaints and many, many visits to City Hall, which Rita can tell you I annoyingly made to her. I came in every other day, but the city has to be able to have the right to take that license away, just like they give it. And this, this situation was just beyond ridiculous. Two months of this guy threatening to hit people with baseball bats, double-charging customers, completely and utterly taking advantage of the public, finding out where people lived, and then raiding their mailboxes the next day for personal information.
Has this been reported to, to the police?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Actually, are you still back there? Maybe you can tell me this. I actually called the police department and asked why they didn't arrest him, um, because they talked to him on multiple occasions. Um, he, do you, do you have any knowledge of this at all? He actually had the nerve to call the police department repeatedly on people. And when I talked to the police department, the reasoning I got was that there were things that they could not arrest people for. But this guy had an awful lot of warrants. I, I mean, it was just ludicrous how many warrants he had. You can look up the court cases. They're there. He's in jail for the rest of his life.
So, Ms. Patrick, basically what, what you've come before us is to ask us to, we're, right now, we permit a company. Am I correct, Mr. Kessel? We permit the company?
W- we actually changed our ordinance. Ms. Patrick was actually part of that project, uh, to, we license not only the company, we do license the vehicle, and we do license the driver.
Okay, so we, we could pull a driver's permit?
Yes, we could.
A license?
Okay. Yes. Okay.
And that's, that's one of the-
But we don't do the background check at this time?
I think that, uh, we're looking, uh, that up. Ms. Kreip is looking that up now, and I, I don't disagree with, uh, the comments that are made. If it's not in there, it probably should be.
Yeah.
We should be doing background checks and-
Well, I don't think we, well, I don't, can we require a drug test for licensing? I don't know if we can.
I would have to look at that. That gets a little bit, um-
Especially if they're licensed to, by us to a company. I would think the company would have to issue the dri- the drug test.
Well, and chauffeur has to be licensed to a company. They have to put that on their application, so I think we've thus far left the drug testing to the employer because, uh, we would run into similar issues of doing a drug test is technically, um, because of the way that you test, um, it's considered by some courts to be, um, a taking by the government, and so you either have to have a search warrant or, um, some other means for that. So, and because it is such an invasive process and, and, uh, like a private and personal endeavor, I'll say the way they go about that, um, there's a lot of protections for that constitutionally, and so-
And question would be you. Part of our licensing procedure, could we require that the, the person submit a drug test to us as part of that?
Or, or require the, the taxi cab company to have required drug tests. Is that possible?
And that would make more sense, probably. That would probably keep us in a, a better legal area to have the companies handle it because, um, the other thing is when we start receiving drug test records, then we have to deal with open record reports.
Right.
The city of Bismarck found an interesting way around that. Um, they require a DOT medical card, and when they do the DOT medical, they drug test you. It's part of the medical, and if you fail the drug test, you do not get issued a DOT medical certificate anymore. So that, that was kind of an interesting plus because they were asking me for a urine sample when I went in my DOT medical, and I was like, this was never part of that, but it is now. So I don't know if that's something that they require-
Well, Ms. Kreip, if you could look into that for us? If, if we could, I, if Bismarck's doing it that way, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to require the same.
Yeah, 'cause this, this was just, uh, this guy was weird legitimately. He reminded me of-
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, Ms. Patrick.
Well, and I, I just really, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be a jerk about the ordinance, but there are some things that, that really need to go in there, like a background check and, and maybe, I mean, the companies, we're, we require a drug test, so the drug testing is not that big of a deal. Usually in order to get a chauffeur's license in a bigger city, you're required to submit a drug test, but it's because they've made the chauffeur's license an occupational license, and so they're able to make demands upon it, such as a food worker's card and a Tams card for places that have liquor license, the serving requirements for a liquor license.
No.
You have to take a class, you gotta do all this sort of crap. But also, um, another thing that I wanted to bring to the commissioner's attention, we had before brought up with Rita, I don't think I, well, except the other day I brought this up with Sean, but we would like to know, um, if we can get the commission to look at kind of a universal license, so to speak. For instance, our cars are licensed in Grand Forks, Fargo, Bismarck, and Dickinson, um, and we do that on purpose. We have vehicles that come from Bismarck to Dickinson all the time, and it's a wasted asset for us to not be able to use that vehicle here. Those places, all three, um, Bismarck, Fargo, and Grand Forks have higher or stricter regulations on their taxis. So I wanted to know if there was a way to write into ordinance maybe that if a driver comes with a Bismarck chauffeur's license or a chauffeur's license with Fargo that you guys recognize that they have done that background check, they have done that DOT medical, they've been vetted through a police department through the state of North Dakota, and they're eligible to drive a taxi. If there's a way that we can create a license, um, and not just for me, even Dakota Taxi, he's got cabs here, he's got cabs in Bismarck, they go back and forth, and the guy that goes from Dickinson to Bismarck drives in Bismarck, and the guy that goes from Bismarck to Dickinson drives here. This makes it a little bit easier for our assets on like Friday and Saturday nights when somebody wants to go from the Bismarck airport to Dickinson. We don't have a wasted asset during bar break when we need more taxis anyway and we're able to bring those cars in. And we can, I came up with a very clever way of, of magnetizing the little sticker, the city of, city of Dickinson sticker, so that it can go on the car and come off of it when it leaves town. But at the same time, I think it'd be kinda cool to have taxis that can go throughout the state and operate. Just a thought. Just a thought.
Mr. Kessel, is there a way to, I guess, almost add like reciprocity or, or?
President Decker, after, excuse me. President Decker, after the conversation that I had with Ms. Patrick, I did contact Charlie Whitman, who is the legal counsel in Bismarck. And we did have a conversation about the request that Ms. Patrick made. I did find out that they have reciprocity with the city of Mandan. So Bismarck and Mandan did get together, they are, their ordinances are not the same, but they're very similar. But they do recognize one another's licensure of, of vehicles and of drivers. When I spoke about this to Mr. Whitman, he saw no reason why that reciprocity couldn't be extended to Dickinson or to other communities, as long as there are assurances that the ordinances are similar enough to lend confidence to all of the city commissions involved. I then, we are, it just so happened that the North Dakota League of Cities Conference is coming up. We are having a city administrators meeting as part of that, and I did ask if that be put on the agenda. So we will be talking about taxicab and drivers, not just in the reciprocity comments, but also, I'm going to find out more about how they, what they require in terms of background checks and DOT medical.
Well, I, I think we should be able to have an answer by next month for you.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Patrick? Thank you. Next up, public hearing on the 2018 budget ordinance. Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you. And I don't have an audience, I don't think. The 2018 budget ordinance, I have the PowerPoint, if you want to just dim the lights a little bit. This is the public hearing, this is the process that we are doing for the budget. So, the budget process, we had the first reading September 5th, public hearing today, and I'm just going to go through the slides a little bit to let the public know what's going on in case they have any questions. That with this public hearing, then this next part, the third phase, would be the second reading and final passage. The budget highlights, in 2018, the general fund forecasted budget revenue and expenses are slightly higher than 2017 by about 4.11 percent. There is no city property tax increase. The oil impact revenue that we receive is used as a subsidy to the general fund, which stayed the same as 2017. A 3 percent cost of living increase is being proposed to the salary matrix, and what that will do is have the employees where they will be in their steps, in their grades, but they won't lose a step. It just increases the actual salary matrix on that. In 2018, we proposing a balanced budget, but with that comes a 2 percent increase from the two, from the administrative fees, which is from the enterprise funds. So those that had a 12 percent revenue, that administrative fees to general fund went to 14, those that had 10 went to 12. Also, in 2017, there was a decrease of two staff and no new hires in 17. In 2018, it is being requested and proposed that we have four new full-time positions, two in streets, one in IT, and then one as a forester. It's also being proposed to have three part-time seasonal positions requested for two departments, which is buildings and grounds and in streets, but three total. Also with that, there was in 2018 personnel promotions and which would, within the departments, which would be a total of about 55,000, so that is also part of the increase. The police department has applied for a COPS grant, which would provide the city with a school resource officer slash investigator for five years, that's what the grant would be, but we would have to be approved for this first. But there would be no city cost the first year, but then the next few years, then there would be costs to that.
Do we know when, we'll find out about that grant?
No, I don't know that one.
No?
I think it's just a, Captain Siani, do you have any?
No, I don't know.
Fingers crossed.
So with that, these are the forecasted budgeted general fund revenue, and as you can see, the general revenue is, general fund revenue is brought up through property tax and administrative fees, and then transfer ins, and then other revenue. And you can see that we had a peak, and then we declined in our revenues. We've had just a slight increase, and then just a slight increase again, is what we're forecasting. That's that 4.11. Budgeted general fund expenses, this is just for the general fund, and that includes our salaries, our benefits, our capital, and you can see that the biggest part of our expenses in general fund is our salaries. Expenses. Expenses for 2015 to 18, and this is for all funds, this is our general fund, our special revenue funds, and our enterprise funds. And we have done a great job with the commission and the budget reviews and all staff and departments in cutting those expenses. A lot of it in the peak of the 15 was because there was so much capital coming through, and we had to do that, and now we're trying to get into more maintaining mode, as we heard I want to thank all my staff and helped with the budget creation, especially Robbie, our accountant, and then working with all the departments, and that's, if you have any questions concerning it, or if the public has any questions.
I think you've done a wonderful job. We all have on this budget, and, you know, thank you for the extra, I know you put a lot of extra time in it and so on. I wish that the press person would be here so he could report that the city is not having a property tax increase this year, nor did we the last seven years. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments for Mrs. Carlson or questions? If not, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public that would wish to come forward, have your concerns or questions on the budget? Anyone from the public?
Looks like your topic isn't quite as popular.
As a road? No one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. The next reading, the next commission meeting, we'll have the second reading and go about approving or disapproving the, the budget.
Correct. That would be October 2nd.
Yes. All right. That is it for timetable agenda. So we're back to West Ridge Drive. Mr. Kubis?
Remember where you left off? I think we need to go back to 2012. No, we went, we went through the timeline of the progression of the project. I think it's worth noting that during the construction of this, we didn't have standards, we didn't have as formal a process as we do now. So the, the construction agreements, similar to how they are today still, but with, between the developer and the contractor, the testing arrangement was between the, the developer and the tester, and the inspection agreement was between the developer and the inspecting engineer on the job. So the, the city came in, you know, after the fact, had, had test results, has built plans, the things we require to, to accept these projects. But obviously, there's been some deterioration. So, we had some improvement options, ranging from, you know, 100 to quarter million dollars a year, to a four and a half million dollar, basically reconstruct. The last thing that I was going to touch on was the funding options, we started looking at those. That sales tax is what we typically use, we could continue to use sales tax for that, but again, it's deferred maintenance on some other streets that have been out there for 20, 30, 40 years. Special improvement districts can be used to fund an improvement like this. If, if we feel that there's, there's really some issues that are so severe, we could, we could request or go through the process, recover money for, from a third party. And then, we, we do have a, a fund balance in our oil impact fees. Again, not intended, or hadn't been intended to be used for a project like street maintenance on, on such a new street. So, a lot of things there to digest, you know, if there's questions that you need to funnel through, use Sean to do that, and, and we can certainly get answers back to the commission in, in future meetings. Right now, like I said, we're, we're replacing hazards as, as, as they pop up. And, and I think you're going to be doing some real quick too, on, on some of the curbing, but, moving on, or were there any questions on?
Yeah, I don't want to move on from that screenshot there. So, have we ever accepted that length of road, the city, as completed to what we thought it should be?
Well, going back through the paperwork on this, it took me a little more time than I thought. What we did, we, we went through, we made a punch list of items back in October of 13 and said, you need to correct A, B, C, and D. There was a lot of development happening out there already, the winter of 13, 14. So, we said, these items can be corrected in the spring of 14. They did. I, I'll have to, you know, if there's, we, we sent them the form, we use a, a final review and acceptance form, said contractor, you sign off, owner, developer, you sign off, the city will sign off, saying everyone's done what they said they were going to do, paid and were paid what they said they were going to be paid, as we weren't involved in that contractual obligation to build the streets. We want to make sure that there doesn't pop up a lien from a contractor against a developer saying, hey, I never got paid, I, I'm going to put a lien on, on a city street. So, that document was sent to the developer.
Yeah. I, I really- We've struggled with the city and the people of Dickinson, the taxpayers are even putting a dime into that street there. But the funding options there, I don't know why we would consider any one of them except for the third one, recovery from a third party. Now, the only other way we, we, I would accept those if, if we had to get the work done immediately. And it sounds like it's a mess out there. I mean, we're going to struggle with, with that road forever until it gets done right. To, to where, you know, I would, I would go along with it, you know, to use sales tax, oil impact fees, special improvement district, to get immediate work done out there. However, only once we have something that we know that we can go back to recovery from a third party for. Because that street was not done right. I don't remember ever accepting it. And, and why, again, why should the people of Dickinson, the citizens, have to pay for that road when it was never accepted, never done right? If we want to go another route, special improvement district, where the businesses along there, but they're going to be punished for road that was not done correctly or, or not fit to be driven on. Now, that's where I'm coming from on this. I really have a problem with that, with that road and why we're, we're, I know we got to repair the stuff that are immediate and, you know, could cause injury. But I'm really struggling with, with why some other parties haven't stepped up to help us out on this.
And, and, and these are the, the options that I know of that are available to us, whether they're the right options, you know.
I don't know what the other commissioners feel, but that's, that's my feeling on this.
Would you like to move on?
Any, any comments, commissioners?
I'm in total agreement with Mr. Steiner. I'm just, I have a hard time special, specialing people that have already paid for the street once when they bought their lot. So, and to use sales tax money that we need to fix other streets to fix a street that shouldn't be like this is, oh, it should have at least lasted 10 years. Troublesome to me. So, I, I mean, I don't know what our legal options are, but we should be exploring them probably.
President? I guess, I guess we need to, we, what I'm hearing from other commissioners is option three, Ms. Kreip, I guess explore what our legal options are. In this case.
Okay.
President Decker, I was just going to say too, you know, we'll, we'll have to spend a considerable amount of money probably this year, or as it continues to settle, and I, you know, I've had a lot of discussions with Engineer Kubis, and, you know, of course, the more money we spend now, the longer it takes, the more we're going to have to spend outright. So, I guess one of the things I'd like to see, other than, I mean, I, I think the commission is going in the right direction or a good direction, is just, you know, the timeframe it will take, and, and whether we keep patching or we try to fix the whole thing. That's, that's my only discretion, so sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's, I, I think you, you have a right to that, because you're dealing with it on a daily basis. So, I do, I do think we need to kind of expedite this, to see what we can do.
And, and this is only half of the situation out there. The other half is, did we ever get the dots on the streets that were supposed to be improved out there to when we could take them over and do this snow removal and so on? I don't think we've ever come to terms with how we're going to handle that. Last year, got into a big mess. Who's responsible for it? Last I heard is they were responsible for it, because we never did accept those streets. However, we went and did it, did the snow removal and so on, and they were supposed to reimburse us. I don't know if we'd been reimbursed. Now, that's going to be a whole nother issue, because apparently there's a problem with those streets too. So, we're going to have to get tough.
The answer, you know, moving forward on, on the next development is, is really, and that, we, we talked about at budget meetings, is saying, well, we, we don't accept an application for a building permit until it's accepted. Understanding there's a warranty period, and, and we fix things all the time under that one-year warranty period. But at the pace of things back then, there was developments out there, and, and it goes back to what you say about, you know, special assessments, you know, those people paid for it already. Well, they've also paid for snow removal. When they're paying city taxes, they got their building permit, they thought the road was, was fine, just like the city did, and then say, well, we're not going to plow the snow. Well, that's pretty tough if, well, if you're homeowner, business owner. So, we tried, and maybe unsuccessfully, to differentiate snow removal from street maintenance. If you have to fix something on the street, you still have to fix something on the street, but you're in the city, we allowed that building permit. We did end up moving snow.
Ms. Trustam, you had a question or observation?
Mr. Kubis, can you just reiterate what, what happened with discussions with the landowner? Or is it the contractor who is held accountable, or is it?
Well, our discussion, we, we had a discussion, this would have been early in 16, with the developer. I don't want to say the landowner anymore, because the, the ownership is really fractured now, and there's maybe 10 landowners along West Ridge Drive. But we did have a discussion with them, laying out, saying, you know, this is what's happening, your road was accepted on the test result that said everything passed. And, and that, we didn't have a standard, again, but the test that they're running is the standard test that every road that I know of is built on, for density compaction test. It, it's, it's the, you know, 101 of backfilling a trench. So, you know, I, I guess the impression we, we left that meeting with, with the developer was that they'd like to, you know, find out what happened here too. Well, we did enough investigation to look at it and say, hey, we have 370 density tests, I can get the number of passing tests, but a bunch of passing tests, 350 passing tests. Not all of them are going to pass. But yet, then when we did further investigations, there was some amount of voids throughout the entire roadway. So it's, it's hard for me to grasp that you went through and did this right the whole way, yet the whole roadway. And it hasn't, it hasn't failed yet, that's, that's a good thing. We, we can go in and maybe do one of those lesser cost approaches to, to fixing the roadway. But I, I struggle with so many passing tests.
How much do we have, how much have we spent on those tests for that?
Yeah, I, I, we'd have to get together, go back a few years in budget, but there's, there's been, I think, four areas that, that we pointed, and most of them were, were manholes that we came in. One, they said the irrigation system was leaking, that was in the timeline. That was the first one we fixed by the Family Fair. One by Menards, one by just to the east of Buffalo Wild Wings, and then one by one of the hotels further to the south. So there's four main areas, but there's, there's more areas that could be fixed right now. Like I said, we're, we're treating them on a case-by-case basis as they become safety hazards.
Yeah. My, my concern again, when you get back to the snow removal on that road and everything, with those manholes that were sticking up, two inches plus, I mean, that's serious. We have our city snow plaza out there, somewhere- Some are driving maintainers. They're going 10, 15 miles an hour to clear those roads. They hit some of those culverts or whatever. I mean, they're seat belted in, but that is a heck of a jolt and can injure one of our maintenance or one of our employees, you know. So, we've got to get some things done here.
I do think we need to expedite this and come up with some kind of solution within a month. I don't think it's going to be anything that any of us are going to be real happy about, but we need to do something. Before you said there is a serious injury to either an employer or even a citizen of the city, so.
Agreed. So, have we accepted the residential area?
Again, we sent out the form. We put it together for them, saying, "Okay, we're going to take this road over." I can't find where we got that signed back because there was a couple of different contractors. There was the underground contractor, the street contractor, the owner, Roars, and then the city would sign off on it. And then their engineer signs off on it recommending approval. You know, that may have slipped through the cracks, but it's in the timeline. Sent that email out to them with that attachment, January of 14, after our inspection.
So, are those roads ready to be accepted? I mean, I've seen them make repairs out there. I've obviously seen Ryan and you out there. I build out there, so.
Yeah. Well, and I want to make sure, you know, we're talking about the concrete.
Yeah, I understand.
The other ones, Commissioner Frederick, the asphalt streets, you know, really the same way. We put together the form for the developer to decide, to sign, saying, "Everyone's been paid on this job. We built it to your spec." I don't believe that one's, we've gotten it back either.
Any other comments, questions on this subject, the West Ridge Drive? If not, we'll move on to Stark County Water Resource District land sale.
We'll make it quick. So, this is the channel, if you can see in the map, this is the channel of the Dickinson Drainage Ditch as it outfalls into the Heart River by Lagoon Cell Number One. It's privately owned back in the 80s, the SCS or the NRCS now. They did a project, so they have some responsibility to monitor that project for 50 years, something like that. And they want to go in and just purchase it. It was kind of, their access is through a lease. They asked the city to become involved. You saw my correspondence with the Stark County Water Resource District. It's an important drainage way to us. It drains over half the city. Goes right through this little channel and into the Heart River. So, we need to make sure that we have good access. Sounds like the Water Resource District took steps to hire a surveyor already, and we'll stay in touch with them. Because if they buy it, they're going to have to deed it to someone. I think the ultimate question will be, should that party be the city of Dickinson? Even though this is outside of city limits where we're talking, this is south of Stockman's Livestock.
Engineer Kubis, that, the first agreement with SCS, the city's all, in that agreement, I know about a couple of years ago, the representative came and said they were maintaining it to a certain level, but in that agreement, it says that the city then will maintain if they can't. At that point, they said they couldn't maintain it, so now, the city is maintaining it to a certain extent right now.
So, we'll keep you posted, I guess, if they make development. But, their intent is to go out and make a purchase. They have funds available to do that. They're not asking for the city to invest dollars in this project. I guess, any questions on the Stark County Water Resource District?
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this Drainage Ditch?
If not, the last item I have is on a Museum Drive lot. And you can see in the map, you have Museum Drive, this is Prairie Outpost, Park to the north and our museum, and then a row of lots on 12th Street. And the area shaded in blue is not city right-of-way, it's actually a city lot. Why it was plotted that way, I'm not sure. It used to be smaller individual lots, now it's one big parcel. It averages about 50 feet wide, tapers off to the west. We'd sent some letters out to these landowners. There's been encroachments over the years. People built fence, landscaping, trees, shrubs, whatever. And sent letters out with very little response. And at the time, things were really booming. This was a few years ago now. Well, maybe we want to hold on to this land. I don't see any need to hold on to the entire piece. So, my recommendation would be to investigate the most proper way to reserve about half of that. Like I said, it's about 50 feet, so we'd reserve about 25 feet and find the most appropriate way to deed some of that land back to everyone.
Could we sell each parcel adjacent to each lot to them, that 25 feet?
Yeah, you could. The question really lies in, are they bound to accept your sale? And the thought being that if you don't, well, then, we're going to make you move your encroachments up there. I think most people would be, you know, in favor of getting that extra land. There's a utility easement out there that isn't going to move, but it'd be an extra 25 feet in your backyard. Right now, we maintain everything that's outside the landscaping, whether it's a fence or a row of hedges. We mow that. But, I think we'll move forward with the process unless the commission feels strongly that we hold on to that 50 feet. If you look on the edge of the map, the 50 feet only exists in that block. And then, it goes back to regular 40 feet of right-of-way. This is 40 feet of right-of-way plus 50 more feet. And so, even if we made major improvements in this lot or this block, that right-of-way doesn't exist east or west of here. So, if we wanted to make it a five-lane road, we could do that for one block.
What's the point of keeping the other 25 feet then?
Trail, maybe a water main, you know, so we could put in a water main outside of, or storm sewer outside of the roadway.
But then, we're still maintaining 25 feet, right?
Yeah.
Only on that block and the rest of it?
You know, there's.
You know, it just doesn't, I'm not sure it makes any sense to.
There's that block and actually, one more lot that I didn't highlight to the west.
Oh.
That's a city-owned parcel again, 50 feet wide, and then it tapers off.
Well, that little corner there.
Yeah.
Plus, we're also north of there as well. That's all our property, Museum Center.
I could see a sidewalk which would be able, it's hard to see on this scale, but it would be able to fit in the existing right-of-way if you sold the whole 50 feet.
I'm not saying that. I'm just not, I'm trying to find out the point why we'd keep 25 feet. I mean, we're still maintaining it, then we might as well keep the 50 feet. This is all, I mean.
I think Commissioner Frederick, and this, you know, I wasn't involved that much at the time when we sent out letters, but there were encroachments. And whether they were allowed encroachments on a handshake 10 years ago or 20 years ago, we're just saying, you know, the encroachments out there, maybe we just draw the new line in the sand, say, "You know what? Everyone's conforming now. Here's your new property line. We'll keep ours for some green space and..."
I mean, I guess I could see that. And 25 feet will do that trick?
Approximately, you know, we'd need a legal survey to transfer any land here, but approximately 25 feet would keep all the encroachments, you know, would make them conforming.
And your idea is to pretty much just give it to them or, I mean?
Well, and that's why I wanted, really, you know.
Because I mean, you're going to have two people buy and then one person's not going to want it, you know?
Yeah.
But I think there has to be some kind of transaction, if it even be a dollar or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, right. I mean, a nominal fee, I'm saying, yeah.
Maybe we recoup the surveying, whatever.
It's unbuildable as it's today. You know, it's fairly unbuildable, but anyway, there's a lot of grade drop from museum down to the backyards of these properties. So, we could make an offer. I don't know that we can quitclaim property to a private landowner. That was my question. We could dedicate this property to ourselves as right-of-way and vacate it. There's a couple of different methods we could use.
Mr. Kubis, if we do go with the 25 feet to property owners and most of them already have fences built, are they responsible for that 25 feet? And if so, how do we keep them held accountable for taking care of that area?
That would be the $64,000 question really. Because right now, there's people, there's, for whatever reason, there's very, very few fence lines that follow the property line that I can tell off of our mapping. Some people are five feet inside, and I think they just wanted to keep the utility easement out of their yard, so they moved their fence five feet in. We maintain that five feet behind their fence the way it is now. But, I understand your question. It would really be, you know, a policy thing to say, "No, we're not going to maintain this anymore." I think, I guess I'd have to look, further down Museum Drive, I think some people do have a little grass behind their fence. Same situation, no driveways, no access on the Museum Drive, but I think there is some people maintaining that property.
It just seems like that area is so developed as it is. So, you know, giving them an additional 25 feet, I don't know that they would move their fence line.
Some of them might not.
It would be similar to on 21st, kind of when you come up over that hill after that car wash, and there's those rows of houses that are on like the 1900 block, I think. They've got fence lines and there's a few feet of grass outside of their fences, but each property owner is still responsible for maintaining that in accordance with the city's policy for mowing and weeds and things. And then codes, Building and Codes does letters and enforcement. So, it would likely be similar. Whether or not they move the fence, if it's yours, you maintain it.
What muddies the water here is we usually don't maintain our right-of-way. That's up to the adjacent property owner. Well, here, we are the adjacent property owner. We own this 50 feet of this strip of land. So, you know, as we discuss this, maybe dedicating it to ourselves as right-of-way and then divesting ourselves through a public process again, but divesting ourselves of whatever right-of-way we don't feel we need is the more appropriate way. And then, it would become like every other street in town, instead of having the city parcel buffering the street and the landowner, the landowner would just abut the city right-of-way.
Any more questions for Mr. Kubis on this? Did you need some direction on this or?
I think it's just something, like I said, in my memo, we've been asked by citizens, saying, "Hey, I want to build a fence. Just tell me where my line is now."
Okay.
And so, if in general, we're okay making folks conforming with what's out there right now and selling, deeding, giving for a dollar, the remaining people, you know, their 25 feet, I think we can find a way to.
Commissioners, would you like to take a month, think about this direction-wise? Or did we, have you made up your mind which you would want Mr. Kubis to do with this? I mean, do we need to survey it, like he suggested, survey it and retain 25 feet and the option to, I guess, sell it at a nominal fee to the landowners, that 25 feet? Or, like you said, vacate it?
Yeah, either, I guess.
What would it cost to survey it?
You know, a couple thousand dollars probably. Vacating it, I think, might be cleaner, but again, like we've talked, you probably have the opportunity to say, "I don't want your vacated right-of-way. Go ahead and keep it." So, need to find a way that's agreeable. It would be nice to clean up the line. Even if the fences don't move, clean up the property line.
Well, there's 14 lots there, right? I just counted.
Yeah, I guess I have it here, probably. So, I think a survey would be a good first step. I don't know that anyone was pushing us or city staff to get anything built this year, so.
Okay. So, I guess if Mr. Kubis would like to at least survey it, I would look for a motion to give him permission.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to survey with a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing nonwill vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Go ahead and get that surveyed.
Thank you.
All right. We have nothing from Mr. Zuroff in Public Works, Planning and Zoning, Zoning Amendment to Cook, Fifth Edition. Mr. Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a second reading of Ordinance 1641, and it's amending Ordinance 1564. As we talked about last time, this is a correction. This actually reflects all the changes that should have been there the first time around except for the designation of a public area, which is the drainage, regional drainage facility on site there. You do have maps up there this time, and I believe you have them in your packet, the existing zoning. And then, the next slide, if you have that, is, it shows the reflection, the green area there you can see is a public. That's the drainage soil along State Avenue. There haven't been any other comments from the public. We did have some comments at the planning and zoning level at this, and city planning staff, city staff in general would recommend that you approve the second reading.
Okay, thank you, Director Hadley. Any questions for Director Hadley on this zoning amendment? We already had, if I'm correct, we had a public hearing on this, so we'd look for a motion to either approve or deny this zoning amendment.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 1641 and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustam.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is approved. The ordinance number 1641 is approved. Building code enforcement, nothing from Mr. Schwent. Anything from commissioners? Have anything to say to the public? I guess the only thing I will say is I am very proud of this city, not only of the staff and everybody that works within the city, but the, just the people of this great city. For we, to end up on that list, the money list, being the sixth best place to live in America is amazing. We always get comments about how nice our city is, and I hope this pushes a little bit more pride back into people, to keep wanting to make it look great because this is a great city. And nothing from commissioners. I guess then I'll open up the public issues of city concern. We've had a little of that tonight, but this is not on the agenda. Anyone with city concern not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern. Seeing no one from the public, close down the public issues. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.